Alright folks, let's call this meeting to order at, what is it, six oh two and a half? Um, roll call, Kramer?
Here.
Here. Ferguson?
Here.
Coates, here. Harris? Absent service?
Here.
Okay. I'd like to thank everyone else for showing up and enjoying the meeting with us. Um, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
It's America, in its republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you. Please be seated. Okay, review of the current agenda items. Um, I'd like to, um, make a motion to amend the agenda to move item eleven C to the work session on the twenty-eighth. So, are there any seconds?
I second that.
Okay, Donna, seconds.
That was eleven C, I'm sorry.
Eleven C, yep, talking about the flag duty.
Work session the twenty-eighth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, I made the motion, Donna seconded. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. Yes, ma'am.
Carrie, weren't you gonna call Shannon?
I did try and she didn't answer.
Yeah.
And her mailbox was full, so I couldn't leave her a message. Oh, sorry, no.
Probably just checking the heater.
Alright, um, actually, that was a motion to amend the agenda, so let's, uh, I'll make a motion to accept the agenda too, so. Motion, um, so...
I'll second that.
Thank you, Donna. Um, any discussion? No. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, motion's been amended and approved.
Aye.
Thanks, Linda. Um, consent calendar approval of January seventh, meeting minutes. Does anybody have any, any, um, complaints or updates or anything like that?
I make a motion, we approve the, uh, January seventh, whether we're meeting or not.
Okay, Donna makes a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
There, Donna makes the motion, Erin seconds. Any discussion? Okay, hearing done. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries and it's accepted. Uh, conflict of interest declaration, if anybody has a conflict of interest with any of the items we're discussing in the agenda, please declare them. And that brings us to engineer. If that's you, Anthony.
So, first item is a carryover from previous agenda for gas detectors, so, um, we have, as a town, we have to have a protocol for confined space entry. Um, there's a process for that. You get confined space trained, either you're an entrant or you're a supervisor on top at the surface. And it's really a safety thing and is important for our liability, that we don't not do the proper protocols if someone's entering our sewer to, um, to, you know, inspect, do some kind of repair or what have you. So, um, the gas detector is like the first component in confined space entry because you set the gas detector, which is only about this big, and you set it in, you can clip it on your, on your shirt or vest, or you can, um, hang it from a rope in the manhole to see if there's gases that are at a high enough level that it would be dangerous to enter. So, um, out here, there's a lot of hydrogen sulfide. Um, if you're driven to Rapid City Airport, you'll notice that there's these white pipes sticking out of the ground every three, four hundred feet, and that's because the, so, city Rapid City has major problems with hydrogen sulfide gas towards the end of their system. So, most of our towns have that. It's something to do with the geology as well, creates more hydrogen sulfide. But, uh, we want to get, um, those safety features for our public works or for any contractor, and that way we can start issuing a, uh, confined space entry permit, so we record what time they went in, you know, if there's an ambulance service, what's the number to call, all the proper safety protocols. So, this is the first step in being able to achieve that. The rest is being the paperwork. Uh, there is a retrieval unit that would also be required, but at this point, we'll make the contractors or our public works have the proper tripod and harness. Because if you go in a manhole, you should be on a tripod and harness, and then we can pass out, we can crank you out of there, so.
Okay, and then, um, what of the opinion or comment that the contractors should have all their own gear when they're doing the work? And instead of using them like a...
Harnesses, yes. For example, harness, if you, technically speaking, if you catch your body weight on a harness, let's say you tripped, you slipped on a ladder and all your weight went onto that harness, you're supposed to actually throw it away and buy a new one. So, I can see that being a requirement of, you know, PPE for the contractor. But, um, when we do the confined space entry permits, we record gas detection levels, so that's why it's, that's kind of an item that's in the middle there because we're basically covering ourselves by saying, okay, we measured the gas levels using our, you know, calibrated gas detector, and the gas levels were this, and, and then something happens, at least we have that, that data.
So, part of the confined space permit would be somebody from the town using the gas meter to record the...
Yeah.
The, the levels prior to entry?
Yeah, like Box Elder, if you enter in their system, they'll drop the gas detector and they'll fill out the form and they leave. And then the contractor can do what he got, what he has to do, and they come back and they close out the permit, so.
Okay. Um, so it sounds like it's a necessary piece of equipment for us going forward, is that, is that what we're getting at?
Yeah, it's a liability and a safety thing, I think.
Okay.
How much was this?
A hundred dollars, uh...
Oh, wait, this one says eight hundred.
Is it eight hundred?
Yeah, roughly. Well...
And that's an M S R, that's a pretty durable unit. They usually don't go out of calibration very often.
And how, how does, how is the calibration checked by just a, a regular person?
So, we have other municipalities that have the gas kit, and you can buy a gas kit too, but usually we'll share it because you don't want to use it very infrequently. So, like, I can get Box Elder to do the gas check on ours and verify it. Otherwise, manufacturers will do it for free.
You ship it in, they'll ship it back to you. But, we'll get it calibrated when it arrives to us. Okay, well, um, I guess I'll make a motion to, um... Sorry.
Do you make a motion that we buy it?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that, I, I just thought you were saying something out there. I'll make a motion that we, uh, we buy this gas detector so that we can, uh, develop our confined space entry protocol and use it to, um, for its necessary purpose.
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion? Diana, saw your hand up.
Thank you. I'm all about safety, but I'm all about liability too. And with Box Elder, they have their own hired staff at city, hired. Where with the contractor, yes, the responsibility's been there, but, you know, we've thirty years, forty years, why haven't we had one in the midst of that or a harness? And our liability, if the individual isn't using it, it puts the town even in more liability because we own it and the contractor's using it. So, that's where I have the difficulties, just like with the locate equipment. The contractor is the one doing the locating. If we buy the locator and the contractor locates and it's a mislocate, we're the ones responsible because it's our equipment. And it's likewise when you're buying equipment here. He was a city employee of Doggone Right. And even being a contractor, he should have it himself, and I think it used to be part of his. If he needs to extend his costs for them services a little bit more to be able to cover that piece of equipment, then okay, so be it. But I don't see us wanting to take that liability on if that individual is not using it, or they get in a hurry, or they're, whatever circumstance, when they're pulling a pump down there at the lift station, you know?
Okay, Kent is gonna be here shortly. He said he'd be about ten minutes late, it's almost fifteen after, so, um, I don't know if we'll be able to re- revisit this after he arrives, but do you have any comments on, or rebuttals to those comments?
Yeah, I mean, if the contractor uses our equipment, he's liable, pure and simple. I mean, that's what Kent could probably confirm. I mean, if somebody takes your card, smashes it into another card, they're liable. You're not liable because it's your card. So, it's a little bit, uh, it, it, just because there's been in the past, in any town, not just Hermosa, I mean, uh, twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, all the towns in Michigan where I'm from were realizing they need to be confined space trained and have all the proper protocols and stuff like that. They're small towns, twelve thousand people, seven thousand people, all like our towns here. So, just because they were lax in the past doesn't mean that they, they don't need to... Once they realize that, they don't need to make a concerted effort to meet all the proper protocols. There's a whole training, um, that's given, um, obviously OSHA is a part of the training, you know, you know, they have an OSHA compliant training. Um, and then most, if not all, utility operators are Hazwafer. So, Hazwafer is a certification that explains to you the dangers of all those things, that you're dealing with chemicals, uh, all that stuff. And, I mean, splashing chemicals on your face and going blind, things like that, those are, that's one level, I guess, of, of danger. But going into a sewer manhole that could be fifteen, twenty feet deep, that's another level altogether, you know, because now you're engulfed. And so, I just know from being the confined space supervisor that for, for ten years I've been one, that the most important thing you can have is a gas detector.
Okay.
Be it the city or the contractor or both, honestly.
Yeah, so it's just...
Chuck says the same thing.
Chuck?
Well, about ninety-nine percent of the time, uh, you don't go in the manhole. I mean, that's what jetter trucks are designed for, and, uh, uh, they don't manage back through the manholes with steps in them anymore. So, they're discouraging you from going in them to start with. Now, the guys in Pace, uh, you know, there's been times too that they had to hop in the manhole and pick up a, some debris of some sort. Um, and so, we have a harness and a Scott pack and that kind of stuff on hand now. And, uh, you know, we just, they discourage you going in them. And I mean, usually when that, something like that would come around, like, you know, it, like I said, when Pace was here, you know, those guys are just like rabbits, you know, they'd go down there and pick it up and come right back out with no harness, no protection, no other. So, they're a pretty good sized object. I'm not saying it's not needed, but, um, where would I be looking in some manhole somewhere, especially than Hermosa? You know, I mean...
So, in your opinion, is this something that the town should get, or is it something that we should forego?
Well, how much is it? Eight hundred bucks?
Yeah, eight hundred, eight fifty, something like that. Eight fifty.
Yeah. I could put the cost on it or something, you know, I mean, like I said, they're, they're discouraging you from going in there to start with.
Right.
So, like Pace Corporation does, uh, the tannering and jetting and one thing or another, you know, if you've got debris in there. I mean, there's special equipment, retriever stuff that we have, you know, extension poles with a homemade, great homemade end of it that we could actually take something out, you know?
Sure.
I, I would guess that...
Would it, would it be useful?
Maybe in the last three years.
Yeah.
Been in the manhole once, maybe. But, uh, it's one of those situations that you have them on the end of the hook, so if something happens, they're gonna drag them out of there, you know? Or constantly talking, you know, gives you a little more, you know, are you okay, are you okay, and, you know, the thing or another. And all that. They say, I don't feel good, I'm dizzy or something, I'm getting overcome there. But you put the force air fans in there to shut it up, to blow out, fade them up before you enter.
So...
I have, I have one of those fans.
If I may ask, how many manholes do we have in this town that are big enough for somebody to go down in there that would require a...
Well, they're all big enough. I mean, they're, they're, you know, accessible, every one of them, the way they're built. They're, uh, normal manholes, five foot in diameter, and then they have a reducing cone that sits on top, you know, that you gotta get past that. But, I mean, on one side of it, you know, that's about forty-five, this is poured straight up and down, this size is about a forty-five degree angle, so, and that, that's supposed to be facing the flow line, so, I don't know. That's, um, we're in the, in the process of buying this, uh, that truck.
Yeah.
You know, so, there's no reason to be in them, though, but I guess if it's required...
Yeah, Donna.
That was my, my question, I mean, is if, if it's a requirement, then I think the town should go ahead and purchase it.
Okay.
To make us, keep us in compliance.
Okay, very good. Uh, Dan, do you have a quick comment?
Please, thank you. Uh, two great points that were brought up about it, and like I say, I'm all about safety. But it's a situation like what Anthony said with the car and car smashes, if your name's on it, you're the one liable, plain and simple, anything occurs from that. And like Mr. Ferguson just mentioned, if somebody passes out and you gotta drag him out of there and they were using the equipment, and the equipment failed, or batteries failed, or something else, the town's liable because the equipment wasn't taken care of because you have a contractor running the equipment. So, I think you need to have a written clause that if you have the equipment, and we're providing the equipment, we're buying the equipment, that we're not liable. As a town, hold harmless clause and put in it so that we are harmless from any accidents or occurrences when the contractor's using it, and we don't have a city employee or a city staff that's managing that problem. I'm all about safety, I'm all about using the right equipment.
Right. Okay, Chuck, do you have a...
One last comment, you know, I mean, uh, we don't go in them. I, I would guess in the last, you know, twenty years or so, may have went in one or two of them. But, uh, that's what the jetter truck is for, is to get rid of that, what might be there, I don't know, I mean, circulating fan, and it's, it's a confined space situation, so...
Okay.
Eight hundred dollars isn't gonna break the bank, and if it takes somebody's life, it would be well worse.
Alright.
Joe, can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
So, is this necessary, um, with all the reconstruction we're planning on, all the new holes to develop? Is this gonna be, uh, used more because of that?
Yes. Anthony said yes, if you didn't hear him.
Yeah, I did, thank you.
Okay. Chuck, do you have another?
Well, the other thing is that, uh, read my contract. I have a two million dollar liability policy, and, uh, you know, the contract says that the town is, is held harmless in, in case of a lawsuit or something. That's why I carry that much liability trip. And I've been around for a few days, so, you know, I kinda know what's safe and what ain't.
Okay.
Could I quickly bring Kent to speed on this?
Yeah, yeah, please do, and then I'd like Kent to comment on the liability issue, and then if we're done with the discussion, we can move to a vote.
So, Kent, we're talking about, I suggested that we buy a gas detector because when we're doing sewer maintenance or sewer inspections, or we have a new subdivision and there's sewer that has to be signed off on, that the protocol is, once you're going into confined space, that you need to check the gas levels because if that line is connected to the sewer, or if it's an active sewer line, uh, we have to fill that in on the, on the confined space entry form. And then usually we'll leave that gas detector in the, in the manhole, and the contractor, whoever is doing it, or even our public works, um, is responsible for their PPE. In other words, their harness, their retrieval unit, and that type, that type of stuff. But I suggested that at the very least that we, we would record the gas levels before we allow a contractor to enter. And there was just a question on, would that open up the town to liability?
Well, it's, it's one of those things, um, well, if, if you didn't do it, why didn't you do it? You had the possibility of doing it, or since you had the equipment and stuff, why didn't you do it? And, and it really becomes almost a ridiculous, uh, analysis. But the bottom line is, I think, as a matter of policy, nothing else. Um, and the, the folks are working, I don't think, I can't remember the other, last week, if you said you had, uh, one of those detectors, do you?
Uh, we have a CPAC, that's your oxygen, uh, pack that you put on to go into confined space. And we also have a safety harness and, uh, attached to something, so if you want to mount it there, you need to.
Of course, the others.
But you can usually tell whether it's safe or not. I mean, if it sticks to the high heavens, you know, it, there's not a potential there. You can stick the fan in there and blow it out. But you're gonna be in there at any amount of time at all, other than to pick up a piece of debris, but we fashion long have, uh, tools with grapples on or whatever to pick this stuff out of there. You know, you don't, you don't need to go in, we have specialized tools to pick this stuff and get it out of there. It is...
May I have your double? I'm was the one, you know, I'm sorry.
That's, you know, I mean, it's eight hundred dollars, but, you know, I mentioned earlier, I'd be going to pay half of it, of the cost, but, you know...
So, is our man on the ground in public works person you'd suggest to get them? Alright, okay. Dan?
If I may, I'll be the double advocate of why I brought it to, with, with Anthony's discussion on it, was basically, we have a city-run department that would be definitely a requirement, and then the town to be responsible for that piece of equipment, have it for their staff. But with a contractor, I said it opens up a whole different can of worms of the liability side. So, I said, if you were going to, as a town, purchase it, I feel they need a whole harmless clause if something happened.
We need to get the liability question answered.
Or the person was in the manhole and they hadn't pulled him out because of whatever circumstances that the town wasn't liable. That's the only reason I brought that for him.
Well, the reason if you engage a private contractor, a subcontractor, a private contractor, to do things like that is because they are experts in their field. Supposedly, they have that equipment. And I think part of any RFP or request for services like that, whether it's subject to bid or not, should be, um, should be clear that you're expected to have your own apparatus to detect sewer gas and so forth. Um, the, the cost of, of eight hundred dollars is if, here's just an idea. Generally speaking, when it comes to contractors, they should have their own equipment. Everybody loves personal safety, or, you know, for sure, but, but they're, they're in the business of doing this. And if we let them know that we, we have one, okay, well, if they get here, but if for some reason it isn't working, your name, well, I don't even know how they work. But, but, so, chances are, they're gonna go down and just see what they can see and, and risk it, or whatever you want to call it. But since, um, I'd, I'd say, uh, here's an idea. Since Chuck is willing to pay the cost of half a woman, four hundred bucks, that the city buy or pay for the other half, and, um, have it for our, our guy, our main guy. Yes, you know, protect him for it, and if there's an issue, or we think there's an issue, or a subcontractor raises an issue, and they don't have the, the, uh, detection device, Chuck can leave them over there and, uh, and utilize it.
Yeah, um, part of what Anthony mentioned before too was, uh, a confined space entry protocol where the town would be measuring gases before... So, it was as part of our confined space entry permit that we would have to grant to them, and then they would not be able to go and do the work without this permit, that the town would have this detector, a, a, a town person or a contractor would use the unit to detect the gases in the hole. And then, um, we would fill that out on the permit, so we'd have a, a logged data point for what was going on in there before the work began.
Yeah.
And so, um, as far as if, if we developed something like that, um, I mean, we're taking a certain amount of liability on to ourselves too, or is... I, I, I think part of what Anthony's getting at is bringing us up to kind of the, the current way that things are being done.
Yeah.
And, and, and keeping safety. I, I know I saw this in the paper industry, that in the last few years, everything's going to just safety, 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 to try and minimize fatalities, minimize injuries and all that type of stuff.
Sure, sure.
And so, um, so in this case, having this kind of protocol and permit, would that, what would that do for the town as far as liability goes? I mean, would that, would that help cover us, um, having this protocol and then, I mean, this detector would be part of the protocol, is what it sounds like?
Well, I think if you get, if you're issuing a confined spaces permit and anything related to it, uh, to have that acknowledgement by them and disclaimer by us that we don't, you know, we're not responsible for that one, so if you are gonna be doing that work for us, you better have one of your own. And those, so I, I'd say that's, that is, um, a very good idea, Anthony, it would make all sense in the world. Meanwhile, we have, or we're doing what we can to make sure, um, the person who'd be down there perhaps most, that Chuck, that they have it available.
Okay, alright. Uh, Joan, did you have a comment?
I do, and there's probably a hundred reasons you couldn't do this, but, um, why don't you just give Chuck a four hundred dollar bonus? Let him buy the equipment and it's his liability.
Uh, well, it, I mean, that's one way to do it. However, if we were gonna do the, uh, entry protocol with the permit, then seems like to make the most sense to me that the town would have control over it, and then Chuck as being a contractor for the town would, I guess, be doing the, um, initial test. And then if, I guess if another contractor needed to use it, then we wouldn't...
Is it really any different than asking a building inspector to come into town and you give him the form you want him to fill out? I mean...
Yeah, but we don't give him any of the...
If we had a building inspector, I mean, Chuck has his forms, they're from the town, but if you had someone else, and you would give them the same form he's using.
Right, I mean, right now, we're just discussing the gas detectors, so, um, I mean, we're, it sounds like we're gonna have to do a work session, uh, to get all the particulars and everything, but anyways, um...
What I can do to help is, I mean, there's a, there's standard confined space entry permit. Permits, I can print them out. There's probably a whole harmless clause in those.
Sure.
They've all been studied thoroughly, it's gone through OSHA, and other safety protocols. Either that way, you can see it, and then decide. I just thought, if we don't, if there isn't one being utilized here, there should be one. That's why I raised the topic.
Appreciate that, Mark.
Just a question. This detector, we'd be buying it primarily for this combined spaces protocol, but in the past, in large developments, we've used them, they're not just for that. I mean, they're great for detecting sewer leaks, and noxious gas coming up, breaks in plumbing throughout the town. So I think you'd probably get as much benefit from having one, other than just that one simple protocol.
Okay, just a comment.
I'm sorry. I don't live in the town, I'm outside of the town, I have no right to talk. But I did this in the oilfield, I trained this. Okay, OSHA protocol. Means you have to have a meter, you have to measure your LELs, you gotta do your, all of the, all of the four gases. And LELs, what he's talking about, while you're out welding, whatever, any explosive atmospheres, you're supposed to be doing it then as well. OSHA has guidelines on it, and you have to be trained in confined space. And you're trying to make it a confined space permit required, or a non-permit required. If a permit required confined space is happening, you're not going in. You're gonna carry a special team. You must have a bump test every time you utilize that meter, and you must have a calibration setup for it. Every thirty days, it must be calibrated. So I'm just gonna lay that out there, and I'll shut up the whole thing, no worries.
Don't believe him.
Those frequency of calibrations is more in the oil than gas.
Right, yeah.
They're like one level up a notch, but yeah, he's, everything, everything he says is correct.
It comports with what I know from what they're getting in papers, so, anyway, thank you, sir. All right, well, I think we've had enough discussion for now, so there's a motion on the floor to accept, to purchase this gas detector, and second it, so all in favor of purchasing the gas detector, say aye.
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 Aye. Linda?
Nay.
Nay, okay. So motion carries. All right, next item on the agenda.
Okay, that's the Dakota pump purchase. So the only thing I'll say is, I will have to verify this one sentence. I don't think it applies here, but it says, products listed may not be complying with BOLO requirements. I know it is, I know that those drugs pumps are, are US-made. So I'll just have to strike that before we approve, but otherwise, it complies. And the contractor, so, this is within the contractor's contract for the Leggins. So this is not like an additional cost for the town. What it is, is that this allows us, so we talked with council governments, and with the state, about how much could we purchase and not pay sales tax?
Oh, okay.
So then we can be purchasing direct certain supplies, especially things where there are warranties that get handed over to the buyer. We want those warranties to remain with the town. So things like buying pumps that have a long warranty period, beyond the contractor's warranty bond. We wanted to purchase those things. So they said that within the rules of the SRF program in ARPA, up to a hundred thousand dollars, could we purchase that way? So this, this is the first purchase that I'm running to buy direct. And then we'll do a deduct on the contractor's contract for this alone.
Okay, so really, this is no net additional cost to the town, is that what you're saying?
No, no.
Okay.
Just an information.
Well, we, we need to, so I guess I'll make the motion to approve purchasing these pumps with the understanding that they'll be deducted, the cost will be deducted from what we owe to the contractor. Is that a good way to say it, Anthony?
Yeah.
Okay. So I made a motion, does anyone like to second it?
I'll second that.
Okay, Linda and Donna both second. We'll give that one to Linda, you had...
Yeah, give that one to Linda.
Okay. So motion on the floor, seconded, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries.
Just a light note, you know, another thing that's out of date already is, we're no longer in the WHO. So that one, whole paragraph above WHO.
Okay. Yeah. All right, very good.
So, next one is Tax Increment Financing District. So this one, I wrote a proposal. Kind of fell in for Neil here, but I'm gonna put this together. So if you look at your attachment A, you did a pretty good write-up on what the Tax Increment Financing District will cover, the district boundaries. So basically, from the Dollar General all the way up, that whole new area is gonna be what we're suggesting TIF 2's district is. Basically, this allows us to have a very clean developer agreement. This is the only one I'm suggesting that we finance as a town. We get, we get to pay ourselves back from the TIF. So it's just a matter of a few months, you know, four, five months, and then we can pay ourselves back this amount of money. As well as the plating, which can go back into kind of like a fund that we use to keep pushing it along. Remember, the fund that did the plat was money that we collected from the Prestons for taps of water. And we put it in an interest-bearing account. And we're paying ourselves the interest from the interest-bearing account, so it costs neither the Prestons nor us anything to plat, which is, this page two is the plat so far. Actually, John had, John Preston had a couple modifications that, we squeezed another two lots in to these open spaces, so there's a hundred and one lots now.
Wow.
And there's fourteen acres, that's now not an open space, but considered future development. Because topography didn't really work well to get to that, but it actually, the corner of it, so if you look at that, that corner right there of this fourteen acres, actually touches Shore Road. So, and the Prestons own the stuff to the west of that, so they could actually do a road and develop that fourteen acres in the future. So we're not trying to eat the whole pie, but it's a hundred and one homes. It's gonna give them probably four phases of twenty-five homes. Split off, parcel, record, rezone, and pre-sell.
Okay, is there a reason why you didn't include any of the property east of the highway in this TIF district?
Uh, 'cause it's not in Hermosa. Oh, in Hermosa? Because they'll get, Neil suggested that we make their own TIFs for Carriage Hills. And that'd be east of the highway stuff, Carriage Hill stuff, forty-five homes.
Yeah, and then...
And then Hermosa Hills is to the west.
Oh, okay, so all this stuff, east of the highway, but even in the north-south direction with this TIF district is technically not in town, then, is what you're saying?
Yeah, so if you're looking at this aerial, the stuff to the east of that red, you're saying? Yeah, that's not inside the town, that's in County.
All right, my bad. Okay, very good. Well, would anyone like to make a motion to open discussion?
No.
No?
These are locked, I mean, I don't see.
Is this something that we wanna consider doing, TIF 2? This is for the, so this is the agreement by which we pay Benish to, how would you say it, create the TIF?
Yeah, to prepare the developer agreement, project plan, and work with the Department of Equalization to establish the tax increment. So that helps us figure out what the taxes are worth compared to the estimate I'm preparing of what the infrastructure cost is. And the Prestons are really keen to know if there's a difference.
Right, yeah.
That they're on the hook for, so we're trying to get to that as soon as possible.
Okay, well, I guess I'll make the motion that we approve this agreement. Is there anyone that'd like to second that? Kent, did you have a comment?
One comment I have, but I apologize, I haven't read this agreement, this proposal. But is there a provision in there for if the scope of the project changes? For instance, that area that's in, out of town, city limits, but in Custer. If it was a term or not, that would be of significant assistance to getting, achieving the goals of the town, or however that works. Whatever your reasoning might be. And if you can have an overlapping TIF, part in the city, part in the county. And that, that does some other beneficial things to that TIF, because you can also, if you'll have land that's in the TIF, that's from the county side, which authorizes, both entities have to authorize it, excuse me. And you may be able to capture some additional growth that way. So just a thought to bear in mind, and if there isn't, if there's a thought on expanding that TIF, or after doing more due diligence, how this looks like, that it provide for a change in scope of project, where, okay, we're doing something a little bit more, more involved, and it's gonna cost this.
Well, so the, if we increase the district boundaries, so then there would be more tax increment. I mean, that would be a justification for it. So then we could do a revision of the project plan, and there would be a revision cost, but then we would draw it from that additional funding from the TIF. Like I said, this is just like a temporary cost to the town until the TIF is created, and the bond is created, and then we pay ourselves back. Just plating and preparing the TIF and everything are eligible expenses.
And if the expansion fund, or the improvement bond, if you will, is, comes from an immediate source, rather than having to wait, you know, three or five years to see a dime from the TIF district, you may have higher floatness cost unless you've identified a lender, or some other source of those funds, to immediately accommodate it.
All right, well, the motion was not seconded, so it doesn't look like the board wants to take this up at this time. So I think what we can do is move this to the work session on the twenty-eighth. Just put it on the back burner until then, and then we can, we can have some more discussion about it at that time. So... Yes, sir.
I guess that was what I was going to ask, is that the board have legal, look over the agreement, make sure of the bombers, make sure of the language that it is. And then I'm kind of curious why Carriage Hills wouldn't be included. I know you're saying, set a separate TIF, but what is the purpose of that?
Well, so they're different developers, and also they're not really contiguous, unless you're really using the DOT right away, and things like that. I know that was done in the past, but they're just different. They're probably gonna be at different paces. One's more like workforce housing versus the Prestons is probably gonna be more of a different, I don't know, type of house, type of construction. Different, you know, different way of developing. Eisman is a builder, and, you know, so we wanted them to not be shackled to that developer's particular pace. And maybe even desire to mitigate risk, right? So like, one thing is, is the Prestons wanna make sure they're not, for example, plating and recording too much, and now they're paying a big tax burden, and, you know, we need to keep it with pre-sales and everything, versus Eisman's being more aggressive.
Right, okay.
So we wanna let them be able to make that decision. And that was the recommendation of Neil, so I kind of had to go with his experience on it.
Right, well, I mean, it doesn't look like the board wants to take up this issue right now, so let's just move it to the work session, and we can hash it out there, and hopefully Kent will have an opportunity to review it, and he can come to the work session and kind of give us his take on it, too, so. Anyways, I appreciate that, Anthony. Let's move on to Engineer D, On Call Services Building Official Consulting Services Agreement.
This one had a little discussion on the topic in the last work session, but, so this is to provide support services for building permit questions and general inquiries. It also kind of covers my time, we need, the ten thousand annual budget amounts to five or six hours a month, right? And so, you know, I'm kind of already spending that to help along some of our FEMA stuff, and things related to inquiries. Like, for example, I'm getting inquiries from engineers that are for Eisman. And so I wanna be able to answer them, you know, can we use tax instead of cop or pro-service line? You know, there's all these little kind of questions that I gotta kind of go back in the ordinance, or Neil's go back in the ordinance to make sure that we've got that in there, that those things are congruent, and they're not really in an inspection fee, right? So that's why there's that annual budget. And then on top of that, I quoted a residential inspection fee of sixty-five cents a square foot, which is in line, it's actually lower than in the worksheet that Jill gave me. But then commercial inspection fees will be quoted at the time of the permit application, in case there's some special commercial building that requires a little bit more in-depth review. But normal residential includes overdig inspections, footings, walls, framing, and if I want to, conceal inspections, and then making sure in that final that the state electrical and plumbing inspectors have been around and checked everything, so.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
So do we need to make a motion on that?
Well, if you want to consider adopting this agreement, or making, doing a board action in regards to it, then we should do it underneath a motion. Even the discussion is better to do under a motion.
I make that motion that we adopt this.
Make the motion, do you accept the agreement by Donna? Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Aaron's second. Okay, discussion, would you like to discuss your motion?
Well, I just, you know, just looking at what all the services are, I just think it would, I guess I think it's a good idea, but because of the inspections and stuff, the cost, and the time consuming.
And would it be possible with all the permitting fees and things like that, that we'd be able to recoup this cost that we've paid to Benish from the town, or would those fees be paid to Benish?
You would have some, because the sixty-five, you charge more than that sixty-five cents, so there is a difference. And there's a worksheet that Jill's got that calculates it. I wanna say it was like, at least about six, seven, or better.
Okay.
So you're gonna be recouping a little bit from every single one that goes towards what you call your enterprise fund, right? Your office expenses.
Right. Aaron, did you have a comment, since you seconded?
Oh, yeah, just to say, I mean, we've been relying on them probably more than we expected for a lot of things. And he comes through, he comes through for us, so I think, I think we're in a good place here.
All right, good comments. Jill, do you have a comment?
I do, so I just wanna verify that building fee calculation that I sent you. That's covering normally what we charge someone, is covering our inspections. Okay, so we, you would just be replacing that?
I'm, I'm within that.
Within that?
Yeah, I'm less than that, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, Dan?
So if you're at 65 cents, then at a 1,500 square foot inspection on home, roughly 97.50 then is what you're gonna be at for that?
That was a 975.
900 dollars.
900, yeah.
975, yeah.
When I, that's where I, 975.
I don't know that I ever charged anything on that.
So that's where our normal inspections, where we went through, normally we were at 200. For example, with Aces, it ran anywhere from 185 to 265, depending on what permit involved and what, how many inspections we had to come back to. So if you're building that into your building permit fee, that means you're gonna have to build above and beyond that $250 for that inspection fee. But that's built into it now, roughly that's where we're at.
But is that per inspection?
Per inspection.
So I have one, two, three, four, five inspections here.
But you're gonna be 975.
For five inspections.
No, it's all inclusive.
That's included.
Yeah, it's basically all-inclusive for all the inspections needed from, what, what are the, the first phase to the last phase, what are they called?
So you have an overdig, in case there's clay or weird soils.
Right.
Footings, walls, framing, and then final occupancy.
Okay.
So that's all inclusive.
But I think you're still a good job, 'cause Ferguson did it, he was roughly 35 to 50 bucks per inspection. That's where you're gonna need to adjust your fee schedule.
Okay.
To accept this, so you can recover. I'm not saying it's out of line, I'm not saying.
Yeah, what I did is I had, I had Neil pull up a year's worth of the building officials' inspection costs in Mitchell, City Mitchell, and we looked at like the whole range to see what that per square foot cost should be. And they're actually like towards the low end of the state, or lower than the average for the city. So I think it's appropriate to use them as a comparison, and that's kinda where we came up with the 65 cents to cover it.
So I think you're gonna wanna adjust your fee schedule.
What you're gonna need for?
Well, that's something that we'll have to take into consideration if we, if we adopt this agreement for sure. Lynda, did you have any comment? Are you still there?
Yep, I am, no thank you, I don't have a comment.
Okay.
Other than the fact that, I mean, we're gonna need somebody.
Yeah.
And, and Anthony and his company have done us well, and if they're willing to do it, I would rather have them do it rather than some other company who knows who.
Right, yeah, so since, since we've been working with them and, and we know them, it's beneficial to keep working with them in this regard.
Yes.
Yeah, and, and I, I'd like to make a comment too, that, you know, anytime I have a question, I can call or text Anthony, and he's always happy to provide any information that's needed on any topic. So as far as I'm concerned with our first $10,000 on-call, we're getting our money's worth. And with this one, we've just expand out into the building stuff, take care of things that is kinda overflow for Jill that maybe, you know, something she doesn't want.
I don't inspect any buildings.
Well, that's true, yeah, and, and, and you don't inspect anything, so, I don't know, I think it's a good idea. So with that.
It's more like, you know, kind of trick, you calling me like, kind of trick, you're calling, and all these questions, can you, you call them back? You know, that kinda thing, so.
Mark, did you have a comment?
I just, just a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
So if they do this, will they, will you be involved in the permitting process, then to approving prints and plans and?
Yeah, well, so there's a plans review that's done.
Okay, is that gonna be an additional fee under the builder?
It's, it's already in our permitting fees.
It, it's included in there? What if the prints are already engineered, is there still gonna be a?
It has to be engineered, yeah, I can't do the engineering for them.
So this, this, we've got builders around here that build without engineered prints. It, it's gonna change some of that.
So like, we already have an office services on-call that, since I started here, that handles the plans reviews. They come in, there's a plan review, and I do that already. This is the stuff that's during construction, so after the plans have been reviewed and the permit's been issued, then they're calling in inspections. And that's where all the, all the little detailed questions come in, can I use this instead of that, I can't find this, they're out of that.
Sure.
And so, so I wanna make sure they succeed.
So if you're doing footing inspections and everything, and the, our soil around here isn't brilliant, so if you, if you inspect it, is, I mean, is it maybe gonna add some soil testing and some other things onto these builders that we probably aren't used to? For compaction, whatever, requiring overdigs when maybe they weren't being done in the past?
So I will say that for eight years, I was a geotechnical engineer for naval facility. Before I became a municipal engineer, that was the first tenure of my career, so I wouldn't do it if it wasn't necessary.
No, no, I get that, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that at all, I'm just, but I mean, I think it will need some changes.
I do notice.
I do notice the environment here.
So, for example, a full-blown soil investigation, geotech is an overkill when you're doing a residential building.
Sure.
You have the building code, right, and there's actually a table in the building code. I used to know the number by heart, and it would say, what's, what's the pounds per square foot? And then you find your footing size, and boom, you're able to build. But you gotta, you gotta have that initial bearing capacity, right? That 1,500 or 2500.
You can't have a bunch of shale underneath you, I, I mean.
So, so there was a test called a dynamic cone探ertrometer, I think it was developed in University of Michigan, Sours developed it. And it's a, there's no lab involved, all it is, is a small drop hammer that would go in the trench, and we would test that trench, and you immediately from the number of blows of that drop hammer, you have your, your kinda multiply those blows by 500, you've got your pounds per square foot.
All right, just trying to verify that, there, there will be some difference in the way we've done things before to the way.
Yeah.
But this will update some of us, I, I mean, it, it will bring us into a better situation for the homes and the people that buy them.
Yeah, I mean, we try to work with it, we're not adding excessive costs, but I mean, cost of the foundation footing cracking and everything, and you're trying to fix that, well, you could've done a couple hundred dollar adhesive B tests in some trenches.
Right, and then also to Mark's, along the line of Mark's comment, you know, I, I think it would be a good thing if we kinda update the way that we do things in this regard around here, especially since we have a couple of large developments, we're right on the cusp of, of getting those started. And, I don't know, I mean, I, I think it behooves us to be responsible with what we allow them to do, and then what we require them to do as well, so that, like you're saying, that, that whoever buys the house ends up with a solid product. Right, so.
I think it's a great idea, I, I think making the standards higher and better for the community is, is a positive. Just so it doesn't cost the community.
Right.
In a bad way.
Absolutely, yep, Jill?
I was just gonna say that there's no doubt it's gonna make changes, but they're all gonna be for the good, things will be done correctly and equally.
Right.
And there's nothing bad about that.
Absolutely.
And if it costs a little more here and there for a developer or a builder, I mean, everything costs more nowadays, so.
Yeah, all right, Jill?
So these are basically the inspections that Chuck is doing, he brings in his inspection report. He'll be taking over.
Yeah.
Okay, and I just wanna clarify.
If I'm having Chuck do them, then I'll, that'll allow me to take care of it.
Okay, yep, thank you.
Chuck?
On the building industry, we adopted the UBC code several years ago. I've been a general contractor and been involved in houses for 50 years. I was a builder dealer for Midwestern Homes for many years, and I actually was a dealer for tri-state area. I physically sell a home and then literally build it for them. The chan, changes on footings has not been updated for many, many years. You can build a two-story house on an eight-by-16 footing. Now, this shale and stuff out here, I'd recommend it instead of a eight-by-16, if it go 24 inches with three rows of rebar. A little overkill, maybe, maybe not, but this shale is very unforgiving. And I have movements in my house down there, and I went to an extreme. I mean, we didn't cut corners anywhere, and we've got a crack in the, it, it, when it gets plenty below, it opens up. Let's get 60 degrees. I had several, several experts look at it, and data, Bud Jack and a lot of them, and they said, we won't touch it. Because it changes so erratically, and I was involved in building 38 houses down there. And I'm kinda starting to get the hang of it after 50 years, you know, and what to look for. You know, we had one house that had an occupancy and permit, and back a few years ago, we had a guy called Dave Daughters, and he did all of our inspections, 75 bucks a crack. Not knowing what his total qualification is. But you couldn't always get him when you needed him because he lived out of town. So as a convenience thing, I said, well, I live right here, and it's very handy for the contractors because I can show up in 10 minutes, where when you have an inspector that you might not get him that day. And the problem you have is, the concrete people, they tell you when you can get, not when you want it. Nowadays, there's tree plants, and, you know, you're all sat up to pour, and you get held up on your inspection, and you got trouble. You know, you delay, so that puts you out of the hunt, in the line, be able to get your concrete when you want it. So I'm just saying that, that, you know, we, I'm qualified.
Are you in favor or against the town adopting this agreement then?
Well, you know, somebody has to inspect my work.
Yeah, okay.
At one point, it was anybody on the town board, well, they don't know what they're looking at, most of them. You have to tell them what they're, what they're looking at.
Yeah. Well, I will take offense to that comment, Jill?
Just an FYI, to the best of my knowledge, the last UBC code adopted by the town of Pomosa was 2012. And whether that's sufficient or not, I have no idea. And, you know, Chuck's absolutely right about, you know, even when we had planning zoning, there were only a couple on there, and I wasn't one of them that actually knew what they were looking at, and I discovered that quite easily when I went with Chuck one day, and he pointed things out to me.
Right, yes, ma'am. Dan, do you have a quick comment, and then we'll move to the vote?
It's just a matter, you'll be doing the pre-inspections also then, and lot verification and making sure of all that. I know our big problem was Pomosa Bills, where we had to do a two-foot overdig down there because of the shale. An engineer Phil would come in, and you're gonna get into a lot of that in these next couple of developments, so. I think it's a great thing, and I, I felt we've strived for that a long time, and I think the big thing is just to have our legal review these contracts to make sure everything's in there that we need. And I think on any contract that we get, that we always wanna have our legal review them, make sure that we're covered and that he has his knowledge on it. And then I think that as long as we have our work sessions, that we look at our fee schedules to adjust for the building fee schedules, and you'll be able to recover this, and that's where we can schedule, and the developers will know what they have to sell their lots for, to be able to make these adjustments ahead of their plating.
Okay, well, I guess. Yep, so Kent, have you had a chance to look at these yet?
No.
Okay, so I, I guess I'd like to propose an amendment to the motion then, that we, that we do a, a conditional approval on the condition that after Kent's review of the contract and his approval, then, then we'll adopt it. Sir, what do you guys think about that?
Yeah, that's okay.
Okay, anyone wanna second that?
I can second that.
Lynda, now you act like you're asleep, and then.
All right, so we, we have the amendment, so I think we hashed out the discussion in the regular motion, so all in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Please vote.
Aye.
Aye. So motion, the amended motion carries, and then, so we have the other motion on the floor, so I'll just ask for a vote on that, and then we can all abstain or vote nay. So all in favor of the original motion? All abstained, motion fails, okay, very good. Moving on to Engineer E.
Wait, so that building official one passed with his review, or?
Yeah, it's conditional on Kent's review.
Okay, so the last one on my agenda here is the Bureau of Reclamation Grant preparations, so I've put in here the water select summary, and on page two, there's the eligible activities at the top. And so what this is, is Bureau of Reclamation is doing a 50/50 match for small-scale projects in municipal metering, irrigation, and lining projects. So I kinda, on my first page there, I kinda talked a lot about the, well, there's all, all of those projects, both lining, converting open channels to pipeline, and then the municipal metering. All that would be activities that I would ask for $125,000 from the Bureau of Reclamation. So it involves the application, I have to prepare maps, the schedule, I have to do an environmental compliance to get letters of support, and then graphics for the, for the grant application. I conduct for the municipal metering, I conduct a propagation study for remote meter reads, so we determine where in the town, and it's very likely it's Tower Hill, where I can collect all the reads from all the water meters. I think that we'll have probably 300 water meters in this, in this project. There's 260-some customers, and then there's Kerry Chills, which will be water customers. So I think we'll be able to get basically all the meters that are, the smart meters that read to a central location, and then that's on the internet, so then it goes to Jill, so she can be going, and basically prevent any errors and get accurate reads. And also, we can check the meters if we have, we wanna determine if there's any like leak detection. Manish has like a, a team in, in Kansas City that they've, they've got a special method using the smart meters to detect leaks, to see if we're having a certain area, you know, 'cause they compare, using GIS, they compare like how many people in an area versus how many meters, and how much water they should be using, and if we've got leaks in the system, that's the smart meter data overlaid with the GIS data could tell us. if we've got more leaks in a certain area, more water loss in a certain area than others. And that's kind of the purpose of this from the Bureau of Reclamation. They're trying to protect good water from being lost and at the same time irrigation water from, to get it to irrigation. So, you know, I had Greg Nugaubar give me a call last week wanting to, you know, remind me that, that we need to be doing something in order to allow them to irrigate with the five million gallons we have in our, in the proposed detention basin, right? So I've got a design that there's five million gallons there he'd be able to access. And it's, you know, the, the issue is, he was thinking, well, he could pitch in pipe to get it to, let's say, center pivot or get it to an area of the field where he wants it, so he would pay for that um if we could work with him. And that's why I thought, well, maybe the Bureau of Reclamation's a better source of funding to, let's say, take that V ditch that we've got and convert it into a pipe, right? That was like over a hundred grand right there. So between the water meters, which are probably about fifty percent of this grant, and then, you know, replacing that V trough with a closed pipe, you know, underground pipe. And um, even, I was talking to Chuck about lining pond, you know, at least Pond A, I think should, you know, we've talked about A and C. We haven't touched the liner on it, but C may not, if I had to like cut it and trim the, the grant, maybe C is okay. But A, first pond needs to be lined, re-lined, that's something we could do within this grant, so.
Okay, so the total amount of the grant is possibly how much?
So the, we, now Terry, you helped me here, we supposedly put some money aside for meters.
Yeah, I believe it was eighty-seven thousand, so we budgeted for the trip.
Eighty-seven thousand? So that would be basically our match. So for eighty-seven thousand dollars, we'd get um, a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars worth of meters.
It's a two-hundred percent match?
It's a one-for-one. So if I put in eighty-seven thousand, Bureau of Reclamation would give us eighty-seven thousand.
Yeah, right.
So.
What's the, uh, what's the chance that we don't get that grant if we make this application?
Well, they have twelve million dollars. So that means that they'll have a hundred, they'll have a hundred awardees. And it's only for our, the western area. They're not caring about irrigation and water loss in the Great Lakes.
Right, yeah.
So it's, it's just for our region.
I guess, I guess the point I'm just trying to make so the, the board can think about that is that the amount that we're paying, not that we're paying, that if this agreement is accepted, the amount that we would pay, the twenty-two thousand five hundred, that's basically, it's not a guarantee that we're gonna get the match um at the end of the process. There's a good, a good likelihood, it sounds like, if there's a hundred awardees.
Yeah.
Um, but it's just something to think about, it's not gonna be a, you know.
And there's value in it because the propagation study will be done regardless.
Okay.
The um, all the selector, the collector location, design of the system, and then all the uh stuff related to specs on the lining and replacement of that V trough with the pipe. We'd have all that ready to go. So if this, if this funding opportunity didn't pan out, we'd just be able to turn around and submit that to another funding opportunity. These are kind of like things we gotta do anyways. And if I can write a grant for it at the same time, then that's why.
Okay.
I brought it to your attention.
Alrighty, very good.
So we need to make amends, I mean, a motion on that?
Yep. Would you like to make a motion?
I would.
Alrighty, Linda?
I would like to make a motion that we accept this uh offer to great grants. And it's something we need, we need it. We have put this off, we've looked at it for years. We've, uh, you know, back when we first looked at it, it was too expensive for us. And it was at that time, what, twelve thousand dollars? I, I can't even remember, but um, this is something that we need. And I think that the, uh, I, I think it's a great idea to just move forward now.
Would you like to um make it pending legal review? Is that something that we should consider?
Dan, are you there?
Yeah.
Do we need, I, I don't know that we need it, do we?
It's pretty much the, pretty much the same contract essentially. Yeah, I, I don't think you need to have me review that again.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks Kent.
I'll second the motion then.
Okay, Donna, second the motion. Okay, Linda, um, I think you introduced your motion well. Donna, did you have any further comment?
No, I just think that we need to move forward on it.
Okay, any other discussion? Uh, Dan, real quick?
So how much are the meters portion of this cost?
So meters, the radios, collection systems, software and everything is probably a hundred thousand dollars. All, all maybe hundred and twenty-five, hundred to a hundred and twenty-five, that's about half of the grant would be that. And then the other half would be related to the um converting open canals to pipeline, which is that V trough out in Nugaubar's field, which is important for, both for him to manage irrigation, but also for us to, we, we just took it out of, we didn't have the money in the lagoon project to do it, so we took it out. And I know that Greg brought it up and said, well, we kind of gave you that, like he reminded me that, that the town was supposed to take that V trough out. And I said, well, we're gonna do what we can to, to do that. And I said, there's, we just gotta find some funding and that's still a priority for us, so.
So, excuse me, I guess.
And then lining.
Were you looking at that you're going to, at one point, it was talked about charge for the irrigation waters coming out of that because of the purification, so the town can reclaim costs of providing that water? Cause that was a pretty big revenue in that water aspect of it.
Yeah, so the, the big thing, and that's a part of this, um, that's part of like letters of support and, and dealing with the environmental compliance, is uh, we need to get with D A and R and lay out our plan for irrigation. Cause they're not gonna just blank check, say you can do, figure it out and let us know, know. They're gonna wanna know before you do anything, what it is you're planning to do. And right now, it's considered, you know, it's considered F1, right? It's considered treated wastewater, so they're not letting us irrigate close to homes. Even fully treated, Cal Door was saying, well, it's still technically considered F1 until we can change the, how, how we allow that, right? So what we're trying to do is keep it inside pipes, right? And that's why I said, Nugaubar came, Greg came to me and said, well, I can get this much pipe, so it's when it's in my field, it's on me and I'll get it to where it needs to go. But can you guys, you know, help in, I guess, facilitate getting it out of the lagoon uh property? And then also about that V trough, right? So we have to line, I've always said that lining of the old ponds needed to be done at a certain point in time. But we didn't wanna do that till we had everything else done. So by the time this gets studied and evaluated and everything like that, we'll be done with the project, with the lagoon expansion. So we'd be able to take down those things that are old and line them. And what we're saying to the O R is, well, then it's not seeping into the ground, so it's there for irrigation, right? That's the idea behind lining, like lining canals. You think about the water district up in Belle Fouch, they line the canals with clay and stuff so then they don't lose it into the ground. So they're the same idea, but in effect, we're getting new liners in our, in our legumes. And then, like I said, the V trough, putting it into a pipe, gets it in an area where it's near homes, gets it away from homes and then gets it to where it needs to go on the field, so.
And Apple Springs with that system, they're not feeling comfortable still with the line irrigation off of that with that treatment?
It's not that they're not, that, that they know it's, it's not, they don't think it's clean enough or whatever, cause it's gonna be permanent limits, right? Um, it's just that it's still categorized as X, right? So they're hung up on that categorization of it as treated F1, right? So, well, you know, we've disinfected it, we've run it through ultrafiltration. I mean, it's cleaner than the water that's going into the Battle Creek, but then they're allowing Battle Creek water to irrigate the field. So it's a little bit weird, cause ours is way more controlled. But it, it has to do with other things, like things that are in our products, our consumer products, right? That we flush down the, the toilet and the drain.
All right, all right. Thanks Dan. I guess uh, no further discussion, so all those in favor of accepting this agreement?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, thank you very much, Anthony. Okay, moving on to six, planning and zoning slash utility building, uh, Jill?
So this time I did add behind our utility building. Um, I did have an issue, we have a citizen in town that had their water shut off on January first and they have still not been able to pay their bill to get their water turned back on. So it's been twenty-one days. Um, I would like to ask the town board, um, moving forward, that we just waive all the late fees that will be associated with that. I see no purpose to make this bill any bigger for this individual by tacking on additional late fees all the time. I would let those waived, just the late fees. For now, for now, until it gets paid up.
So what's her payment plan?
Um, she has not called me to do a payment plan.
And I, I did talk to this individual this afternoon and this person would like to know if the town would consider doing anything. And I don't know what you guys have done in the past, but.
We have never, since I've been here, waived an entire bill.
No, and she's not, I don't believe this person is asking for the entire bill to be waived, but is just trying to figure out a way that they could get their utilities back on. And I think waiving the late fees is certainly a start, but I don't know if there's anything beyond that. I just said I would bring it to the board and it's kind of.
How much is the bill?
I thought individuals, it right now is up to four hundred and fifty-one dollars. I mean, I would be willing to contact her and see if she would like to do something. And I've done that in the past with some individuals, they'll say, give me till Friday to pay my bill. And I will let them do that, but the minute you're not in here to pay it, then I'm not going to do that for you again. So I would be willing, if it's okay, to set up some type of payment plan for her. And the minute that it's not happening the way they say it's gonna happen, then um, maybe the water needs to go back off. Um, she's had it in the past, um, churches and western community action pay her water bill for her. But I think um, she's run out of all those options right now. So I just, on what I am right now, I just wanted to waive the, the late fees that are still gonna be coming. Like today I did waive the late fee. So if you say no, I'll tack it back on there, but I really don't want to.
I'm reading on.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Okay, so the bill is four hundred and what?
Fifty-one after I billed today.
Okay, and does that include late fees?
Yes, except I waived the late fee today and how much?
So, so that is three months of late fees, four?
Probably, probably four.
Four months of late fees. And are you asking for us to um take those off of there or just in the future?
I was not asking to take those off of there, I was just asking for the future because I just don't wanna compound the problem, making the bill bigger and bigger.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha, thank you Jill.
Okay.
But the thing is, you know, this is an ongoing situation and uh, it's kind of like, I hate to say it, but everybody feels sorry for me and pay my water bill.
We're not ma- yeah, we're not mentioning any names tonight, but.
Huh?
So we're not mentioning any names tonight.
No, I said, you know, I know who it is and, and it's an ongoing situation and I don't know.
So by that meaning, this has happened before with this same individual?
It's been an ongoing thing since I started four and a half years ago.
I see. And does this person have any interest in um being put on automatic billing through a checking account?
That would be a no.
Absolutely not, huh?
No.
Even if we were to, to remove the late fees, would this person be willing to do it then?
To pay the rest of the, the whole bill?
Yes.
I do not know the answer to that tonight, I was just asking to waive the late fees moving forward.
Well, my point being that if, if she was on, if this person was on automatic billing, it, there wouldn't be any occurring late fees because it would be automatic. And so maybe a deal could be made that uh, if she signed up for the automatic billing, we could remove, uh, make a deal for payments for this, this late bill, but also remove some of the uh late fees to take the burden off.
The thing about auto payment, you still have to have money in your bank for the auto payment.
And I wrote to when I was a job.
Deb, did you have a?
That's what I was just gonna say, if she can't pay now, I don't know how she'd be able to do the automatic payment.
I mean, the, the last thing that I wanna do is, you know, kick somebody when they're down, so to speak, and somebody that's under hardship. Um, on the flip side, the late fees are there to incentivize people to pay, you know, and so there's a, there's a little dichotomy we have here that.
And I'm not asking you to waive the previous, I'm just asking moving forward that we cut them off right now.
So then, so then what she would have to pay to turn the service back on is all the late fees up to this point? And then an additional connection fee or?
There would be the four hundred and fifty-one dollars that's passed to, plus the fifty dollar, no, that's already included in there. Four hundred and fifty-one dollars to get the water back on.
Yeah, um.
So hi, and how much is the bill? The water bill, actual water bill?
It's always ninety-nine seventy-four, well, seventy-eight fifty, this individual does not have garbage. But then there's always the.
She doesn't have garbage?
They.
Oh, okay, I know what you're gonna say, I'm sorry.
Yeah, four fifty-one sixty-seven.
But, so you're saying that we should uh waive the late fees from now on?
I'm asking just to put a halt on them right now, so we don't make her burden any bigger.
Okay, but the question, but my question is.
I'm actually sorry I asked now.
Well, no, that's fine, but I mean, if we put, waived the late fees, is she gonna be late every month from now on or, I mean?
It's just gonna stay at the same dollar amount, not accruing another thirty dollars, another thirty dollars, another thirty dollars.
If I can comment, the, the idea is, is that she's accrued four hundred and fifty-one dollars in late fees up to this point.
Not all late fees, that's part of her bill also.
Bill plus late fees up to this point, but she still doesn't have her water turned on right now.
No.
Right, so it's not like um, she's gonna be able to use it until she pays. And then only in this instance is what you're asking, is that we, you're asking the board to do, to um waive future late fees for this specific instance.
And once it's paid, I'll uncheck the box and they will accrue again, just like everybody else gets one.
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of clarify that, it seemed like there is a question. And also to make sure that I had it right. Dan, did you have a quick question?
Yeah, unfortunately, I, I feel the passion, but you set the precedence and you've got all over two hundred and sixty other users then.
I know.
That anybody catches drift of this, they're all gonna. That anybody catches drift of this, they're all gonna expect that we never get a late fee, that we never have a turn-on fee, and it's the hardest circumstance that a board can deal with. And so, if you set that precedence, you be ready for it, because every individual that comes in here is going to want the same situation, and we've had some very difficult ones in the past, so be prepared.
Yeah, Deb, did you have an additional comment?
Just a quick comment. Does she have a timeframe that she's gonna try to do this, Jill?
No.
So there's, so we're gonna turn it on? Is that what you're asking?
She's had no contact with the office until today, when, um, she talked to Terry.
So she, she wants it turned on, is that what you're saying?
She's just trying to figure out how she can get to that point. If the town is willing to work with her at all, is my understanding. I mean, I think she realizes that she has to pay it, but she doesn't feel like she has...
I would like to make a motion.
Okay.
I would like to make a motion that we, um... Excuse me, and I ask one question first. How much are the late fees per month?
Thirty.
Thirty dollars.
Thirty dollars, okay.
So there's four months late fees? Sorry Linda, is there four months late fees now?
There's a late fee every single month.
Yeah, I realize that, but how much, how many months are we looking at the bill?
I'd have to get a history on it and look it up.
Okay, she's looking it up, Linda, can you, uh...
How many months, you want me to go look that up?
No, I'm just...
Well, just how many months is...
I believe at least four.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, it, we have a dollar amount, so... Linda, would you like to continue, uh, making your motion?
Yes, I would. I would like to make motion that we, um, change the late fees, and this would be maybe something we need to talk about in a work session, but, um, or change now, whatever. The water is turned off. As long as the water is turned off, I believe that we should either quit charging the late fee, or make the late fee smaller, when the water is already turned off. It's not, um, so, i- i- yeah, it's just, you're, she's accruing late fees, over late fees, over late fees, over late fees. The original amount of money that is owed for her actual water bill is, uh, you know, that's, that's fine, but I think we need to lower the amount of late fees on anybody's water that is turned off.
Right, so it only goes...
It's getting absolutely nothing for that $35 a month, you know what I'm saying?
Right, so...
Or $30 a month.
So essentially, what you're thinking about is that the late fees have a, a maximum amount when the water's turned off?
Yeah. Uh, uh, you know, maybe, I mean, it still is a bill that has to go out, so there still is, um, administration fees, a- administration costs for that.
Right.
Um, but I don't think that they need to accrue at $30 per month. I would think that, um, when there's not, no other action, there's no other action, um, or shouldn't be any other action with that account in any way, shape, or form, other than the billing, that it, that it be lowered, that late fee be lowered.
Okay, um, so did you wanna, um, kinda tighten up that motion?
Sure. Lower the, uh, to, in this particular case, uh, lower the late fee to, um, let's just say $10 per month, um, and try to, and, and get it, get a plan with the owner, um, to get that water turned back on.
Okay, Linda made a motion, is there a second? Okay, no second, motion dies.
Okay.
Donna, did you have a...
I have a comment. Okay, so, I, right, she has probably four months of water bill owing. Okay, I say, let's stop the late fees right now, that she doesn't pay any more late fees until, but she cannot have her water turned on until it's totally paid up. And then, we start from day one again. There will be a late fee, but we won't add any more late fees on right now, and she will not have any water right now.
Yeah, and that's, I believe that's exactly what Jill was asking for, yeah.
So we got released...
Thank you Donna.
Yeah, we're on the same page now, yeah.
Okay, um...
Who's that motion?
That amount?
Oh, well, would you like...
I make a motion that we cease on late fees.
Is this just for this particular case, or all cases?
There's no more ki- late, there's no more late fees charged right now, until the bill is paid. But she has to pay all the back ones that she's been charged already. And then, she can, at once it's paid in full, she can have her water turned back on, and then, the late fees will accrete on if she doesn't pay again. We won't charge her any, you know, hopefully she can, hopefully she'll get, you know... But I don't know if she's even working, so...
I will call her and let her know that I'll try to work out some type of agreement with her.
Okay, um, Donna made the motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We're in seconds, okay. Um, let's try to keep the remainder of the discussion pretty succinct, we have a lot more stuff to do. Anthony, did you have a quick comment?
I was just gonna say that we have new water ordinances, so...
Yeah.
Obviously, whatever's in our ordinances is what we're supposed to do. Well, so we're in our old ordinances, what are our new ordinances?
Yeah, I haven't seen the new water ordinances.
We have to patch those.
They're, they're refinished things also, that's gonna raise the water bill, so...
Yeah.
Alright, thank you. We're done with that thing?
Well, no, there's a motion on the floor, and it's seconded, and we're in the discussion period, so... Is there any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Linda?
Aye.
Aye, um, I'm gonna abstain from this one. So we have three ayes, one extension, motion carries. Okay, very good, uh, Jill, uh, number B, please.
Thank you, um, 20, 24 dash 48 digging and grading, um, and right-of-way permit for the Whitney Street Water Main Extension. I did ask Anthony to also stay for this permit, um, to answer any questions about what's going on. With that, he did the staff report, correct?
There's a water main extension that's replacing a private water line that goes down to Whitney from Manning. So, that needed to go through the state, and so, this is kind of a an example of a situation where it's not a full-blown subdivision with 100 homes or 50 homes, it's a small extension of our existing water system. So, it needs to meet our criteria. Any, the private lines that were temporary need to get replaced, in any instance, need to get replaced with permanent water line meets a lot of fire and pressure requirements, so, um, that was something where I did the, I got it through the state, through the review process, they issued an approval certificate, so that our water system is, is not having any deficiencies, and so then it's just a matter of, um, Ferguson Construction reimbursing the town for the time it took me to get it approved through the state. I don't think there's any sewer, it might just, a little Whitney Street look into, in the blast.
Yeah, this, um, is, this is basically an after-the-fact one, so what's going on?
Well, after the fact, and that, to, for the town to issue the digging, grading, and right-of-way permit, the costs associated with getting the approvals from the state get reimbursed at the same time, right? So it's kinda like bringing everything current, and then issuing the permit so that that can get put in, right?
Okay.
This is for the digging and grading part of it?
Yeah, this part hasn't been built yet, so it's not after the fact. It's water main that hasn't been put in yet.
Okay, so, um, it's not after the fact then, because it, the construction has not been completed?
Correct, correct.
Okay. Um, I, I was just asking that, because the date on it's December 20th, so, I didn't... I guess that that's just how long it took to get the approvals, things like that, or?
The permit, it's a renewal, I mean, the permits have run out, so it is a renewal, and I've paid the fees for the renewal.
That's like two different things, so the town has permits, but then the state has a review process and a certification on the system, right? So for adding six-inch and four-inch water main with hydrants and, you know, all that, then, that gets attached to our water system compliance.
Okay. All right, Dan, did you have a comment?
Yeah, on this circumstance here, I had turned in a quite lengthy complaint on the circumstances, because the developer and also our public worksman had gotten a permit to dig a six-inch in underneath the Manning into this development. And in the process of that, he didn't comply with that, and came back in with a temporary permit after the fact of digging him a temporary permit to serve the home that he sold the lot on, so that there wouldn't be problems with the homeowner and the compliance of it. So in that action, in that complaint of mine, there was never any DA and R reports, there was never any engineering, and in our ordinance, it was clear that anytime that you're doing a subdivision, whether it's one lot, or whether it's eight lots, that you have to have compliance, you have to have it engineered, that you have to follow all the compliances of the infrastructure of the development, bring the development in, the drainage, the digging, the grading, the whole nine yards, which none of that was complied. But yet, the individual came in with a temporary water permit and tied into one of his rental properties to bring the water line around to serve the residence, which was never approved through the whole process. Nor was the extension of the main ever completed or done, and as well as the facility's plan. And in any other circumstance, stop-work orders were issued, and fines were issued into non-compliances of not following our ordinances, and when it was our public worksman that did this work, and our public worksman inspector that did this work, and none of the compliances were done, and yet, nobody had a stop-work order during the circumstances of any of the events that were going on. Yet, other individuals in the community got stop-work orders put on them, and fines assessed on them, and in the circumstances of construction of what was going on. So with this now in compliance of where it's headed, I almost feel there's a conflict with our engineer doing the engineering on it. Um, nothing against that circumstance, but it's also a situation where all of this was brought up back then, and nothing was done about it.
Well, so, I will say that, so it is very common, so I had a situation where I had four houses that had a private water line, right? And it was a nuisance to the town, there was no fire protection or anything like that. And so, the town had me design the proper water line with hydrant and, and everything to replace that private line. So I look at it as a situation where we're doing cleanup on private water lines. I, I definitely say that there's a, there's a tipping point when it goes from simply cleaning up private water lines to like designing subdivisions. And we'll say that my predecessors are designing full subdivisions, and was the town engineer. And I, I choose not to do that, and, uh, I keep it to a limited amount that falls within the, our, our general accepted principles in engineering, so... I would say that, um, that there needs to be a mechanism in place, because we have other lines, it's not the only one in town. And when we are, we're going through, we need to be able to clean up those situations so that we have proper water pressures and fire protections.
Right, so, um, I mean, can you, can you like briefly, in like three minutes, kind of in plain English, kind of explain, is this, is this situation too complex to cover it that quickly? Just give a, a, an overview, because, just to make sure we're all clear on, on what we're talking about here?
Yeah, so, I do think there is some, I don't know if there's some confusion with the sewer system as well, but we're only talking about water and water, the water line, the stuff that I designed to replace that private line, that then properly extends our, our water system down to Whitney, that hasn't been built yet. So first, it went through all the proper processes, right, it went to the state for review, they made comments, we addressed the comments, and then it was issued for construction, so, um, so that's what was done. Obviously, there's a bill that, um, Ferguson has to pay to the town for the, for the cost of doing that, but it's, these are small amounts that are done in order to meet the, the community standards, right? We have like community standard details for our water system, so they need to meet that. And obviously, we're, we have, we're always updating that, and we keep saying to Rapid City Specs, to Rapid City Specs, but at the same time, we want, we also wanna have some of our own unique specifications, so... So that's why, in the process of when we were doing the water upgrade, or the water ordinances, I also was instructed to, you know, clean up the, this Whitney water system extension, so... The sewer, on the other hand, as long as it's only for one home, it's not considered a part of our city system. But as soon as you start adding other homes to it, on, on Whitney, then it's a it's a town pump station, right, so then it needs to have a secondary vault and all those things. And those things we documented in NASBA, so, but that hasn't gone into the next step yet.
Yeah.
We're waiting to see a FEMA, we'll make that a new point by just eliminating that station, as well as the other ones that are in the town, so...
Right.
I don't know if that answers your question or not, but...
Well, I mean, is, 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 was there anything improper done? Is, I guess what I'm, is what I'm asking here, I mean, I'm not, I don't wanna beat up on anybody or anything like that, but, I mean, is, i- it... I mean, what, the work that, that, that you did, that Ferguson Construction will have to reimburse the town for, that was to bring the water line up to...
Compliance.
Compliance, so previously to that, the water line was not in compliance? Or the plan for the water line was not in compliance?
Right, well, there was no plan. It was just one house that was built, so it had one independent line, which wouldn't serve anymore, anymore of that, of that area of town.
But that, that water line...
Replaces that.
That water line is installed then?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And so this is the plan to replace that water line with another one that will serve more than just that house, is that the idea?
Yeah, and, and properly serve that house on its own, through its own system with a, with a hydrant.
Okay. Uh, Jill?
Well, I think whether or not, um, we feel that a temporary water line should have put in, it's in the past. We now know that everything has been submitted according to Anthony. Everything is in compliance, so I think we need to look forward into the future, not back so much.
I ditto that. Ditto, ditto on the table.
Trina, did, do you have a question?
Was this all done to avoid, um, paying develop, developer fees? To build more houses later, and just start with the one, and kinda do it slowly?
I, I don't know, I don't, I don't... I, I don't know, I don't, I don't know.
It just kind of, you know, it just, the developer fees, when you're talking about developer fees for our town, they're kind of large. And so it just seemed like that.
Okay.
I'll let, you know, come on down.
So, I guess the motion was, if you're gonna make one, is related to the agenda item, which would be the permit, that you were agreeing to issue that permit.
Right, yeah. Chuck, did you have a comment?
Well, yeah, I mean, it's a situation that Whitney Street does not have any water. So consequently, you have to make revisions to get water to that property. This six-inch line that has been approved will take water to a point on Whitney where it pins those east or west either one off of this main. Uh, revisions can be made at the time to put T's in and cap them for future use to go, I mean, fifth should be tied into fourth, and fourth should be tied into third. However, there's no water line down third, and there's no water line on Whitney Street. So by installing this at my expense, you know, you're getting, gaining some advantage of having water already stubbed to Whitney Street. It's a matter of putting a couple of T's in a line and when you're building it so that for future use, that line needs to be moved from fifth to fourth.
Right.
And I had to create right-of-ways easements through there from, unfortunately, Fourth Street was vacated at one time, which should have never happened. You don't vacate streets and alleys and stuff, they're there for a reason. I mean, in eighteen eighty-five, these, these people were smart enough to figure out when they did the layout of the waterworks in the town, you know, you just don't cut them off here and cut them off there, I mean. So with that street being vacated, prior to my purchase, uh, we had to create easements because, if the street hadn't been vacated, there wasn't a problem with putting the, the mains downstairs there. But now I've had to create an easement because they were given permission to coach the street.
Right. Kent, do you have any?
I'm not bawling about it, I'm just saying I'm gonna put a line in that's gonna serve a boat lot, and it gives an opportunity for the town to tie into that pipeline for future use.
Right. All right, do you have a comment on this permit or situation, Kent?
As to whether or not, um, a certain fee or penalty should apply to that scenario?
I, I don't know, I mean, I'm just, I mean, obviously, whatever we do is a board decision, but I'm just trying to get clear on kind of what the situation is, you know? Um, I mean, 'cause I hear kind of different things from different people, and I'm trying not to do kind of a, a show in here type of thing, but if, 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 if we need to do anything because something was done improper, then maybe we should, but if, if we're gonna turn around and make it right then. But the thing is, is, you know, we have a lot of developers coming into town and everything like that, so, um, I don't, I don't know if, if we'd be setting a precedent in any way um, by not taking an action like that, I just, I don't really know.
Well, yeah, but just to help you.
Go ahead.
If we have a developer, like for example in Carriage Hills, there is an area of Third Street where the water main is undersized. If, in the process of their development, they say, hey, could you, could you take, redesign that extension so that we can loop into it? And then we tie in our development to that line? Then the town has me do that, and then easement reimburses the town for the time it took me to modify our, our system to accommodate that. So that's kind of the same principle, right? There is gotta be some mechanism where there's a little, there's little extensions that alleviate private line, lines that aren't compliant or, um, things that make it development or looping work. We have to be able to loop our water system. There's gonna be these instances where all of a sudden, our model says, we got a bunch of dead ends here, and we're gonna be flushing these and wasting water and all that stuff. If we do this, we'll save this much water from flushing, and, uh, we'll have redundancy if we add a water main break, right? So I'm just trying to say that we need to think about how we can have a mechanism in place for me to be able to make those small corrections in our water system um, and then pass those costs on if we can, right?
So, number one, I'm starting from the fundamental aspect of consistency in the water in the, in your public water system. And so there are, there are times, because that's just a, that's just what how development is, that you, one goes so far, then another one goes so far, and you want that piece in the middle, whatever opportunity or whenever that situation arises, that they connect perfectly. You know, that's, that's what it's about, and that's what's most fair. Um, not knowing a lot about the backstory on this, um, I, I think, Dan, your point that you brought up was that, if you said fines were waived?
No, they were never applied, period, and they should have been. And I'm not saying that this, this is the proper way. This is the way it should have been done day one, and wasn't. And the thing is, is like I say, there should have been stop work orders put on the way the temporary line that's still there, that was never approved, still never been approved, to this day was put in. And what Anthony is doing is what should have been done day one per our ordinance, and we have a good ordinance and a good extension. And it's gonna be a dead-end line at Whitney anyway, because there is no infrastructure. We're all aware of that, and Mr. Ferguson was aware of it when he bought the property. He knew what he was getting into. And so that's why Anthony had the file that was this thick of the violations that were broken with our own ordinances, there are subdivision ordinances, to the state law, to his own contract as a public works individual and compliances that were supposed to have been followed when this development was started. And one house was allowed with that previous board to be allowed to have a hookup. And it wasn't followed through on how that hookup was gonna be because it was gonna come off across Manning Street, and then he was gonna tap into that six-inch line off of the main and run that line down. Well, he ran out of time, so before it happened, he tied into the house that's a rental next door of his to run a line over to this neighbor before a lawsuit occurred without a permit, without permission. And then put a sewer line in with a lift station for the sewer without any permits.
You know, they have a permit for one man's, one house.
So there was an informational permit put in for that, um, February eighteenth of last year to do the temporary water line where he ran from the one house down. And that was in a board packet, and at that time with that board, they were okay with it. It was temporary. And he was supposed to move forward and get a design going with an engineer, which I think he has done. So we can go back and live in the past that it was done wrong because it was obviously not done right, but it, there was an informational permit submitted for that.
Okay, um, Kent, before you have a final comment, Chuck, did you have anything?
Well, do you notice a little bit of a tone of, uh, you know, uh, vendetta maybe, for like a veteran?
What, what I'm trying not to do is turn this into a?
Free-for-all.
Yeah, free-for-all or a show or anything, but.
Plan is to convene.
Yeah. What I, what I'd like to do is just see if we can get down to the facts of the matter so the board understands what's going on, and then the board can make a decision on what we need to do, so. That's, that's what I'm trying to do here, so, Kent.
So informational?
Permit was submitted, I think it was a quick thing that he needed to get water to that house. I mean, it was only supposed to be temporary, and then the, I believe at the meeting, you were supposed to go forward and get it engineered, which he didn't do instantly, but he has done it now. So I would just like to not talk about it past all the time, and I would really just like to move forward.
What, what's the date of the informational?
Um, two eighteen twenty-four. It's almost a year ago.
It's been less than a year.
Less than a year.
Which envelops like a blink of an eye, but.
Same.
Um, but it, it seemed to me if there's an informational permit issued, people are aware of it. Was there any procrastination involved? Maybe, maybe not, those things don't happen overnight because people's lives are busy and he's got it. So all those things, unless a timeframe was given for which that was supposed to be remedied, that temporary situation should be, should be remedied, um, and now that it is, um, is, it's under a year, and he's on, well on his way to doing everything but putting it in the ground, it sounds like, you gotta go in there, right?
I've got all the materials put in, I mean, it's not like, you know, start from scratch, the material's all lit, and this was a temporary thing, and, you know, um, it's not something, and there's a meter at both ends. Not like somebody stealing water. I mean, what actually is happening here is two individual properties are carrying a one-inch line. And I've had some discussion with the renters on the other hand, and they say they got plenty of pressure and water and not a problem. I mean, you can see with one or the other using the water constantly, that there could be a shortage. I mean, but that has not occurred. I mean, there's two houses on a one-inch line and that, a meter each end, so it, it's covered. I mean, and it is temporary, it was, was not designed or approved or anything for, to stay that way. The property was sold, and the inspector says, I want water coming out of the faucet, I don't care where you get it or how you get it.
So it sounds like Anthony's proposed design has been approved now?
Yep.
So all you have to do is do it, right?
Correct, and he's been a little busy with other things.
Yeah.
We'll do an expansion and some other things.
Is there any, uh, deadline articulated on that permit that?
For the temporary?
Yeah.
No, there was never a, there was never a timeframe discussed that he had to meet for that. That I'm aware of.
Is there a hard deadline in the ordinances or something like that for?
There's not anything, I'm pretty sure there's not anything in the ordinance about this, but I'm not sure, like hooking onto another house, I'm pretty sure there's nothing in there.
Uh, Joan, did you have a comment on the ordinances or?
Well, most permits are only good for a year, and you renew, you know?
Okay.
But the other thing is, I wanted to mention is, in my opinion, I don't, I don't understand, I mean, I don't think you can go back and on a past board's decision and try to upheaval it. They accepted it. They basically, they, you know, they said this is temporary. And whether I agreed with it or didn't agree with it, or anyone else, that was a board decision, and do you want to start overturning past board decisions? I, I just think that's the kind of words you should be thinking of.
Right, so Kent in there?
It seems to me that there's nothing nefarious afoot here. Um, is he a little slow in putting the, in rectifying the, the temporary situation, making a permanent one? Yeah, has the town lost out on anything? Because that's apparently not, because there's meters on it, so forth. So I, I don't, I, I think it's one of those things where we're just maybe a little bit of an admonishment, you know? Chuck, can you please, how soon can you get that in? Keep the date and get it done. But I don't think a, a fine or a penalty is really necessary. I've not seen them, but maybe I'm missing some.
Okay, Aaron?
Yeah, I want to make a motion to approve this permit.
Okay.
So we can get on with everything.
Yes, sir, Aaron makes the motion, do we have a second?
Linda?
Linda? Oh, I'll second it.
Is she there?
I am.
Oh, there she is.
Okay, I think we had enough discussion.
Yeah, I'll agree with that.
She said I agree with that?
Yeah, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ayes.
Aye.
So, and Donna abstains, is it due to conflicts or?
Well, my name is on the land too, so.
Yeah, okay, fair enough, motion carries. Three ayes, one abstention. Okay, moving on.
Six C, I hope this is a quick one, you guys are cutting me in on Michelob Ultra time. Another one for Ferguson Construction. Um, Leo Van Zambick, um, asked us if we would please pull a permit for digging through his property. So we did do a permit, I have all the drawings of the easements that they will be working through um, included in this. And I also have Chuck's contractor's license application and also his liability insurance, which I think Leo wanted that to be part of the permit. Um, so, um, part of this is in the floodplain, but there's no grading, it's just trenching in a water line, right? Trenching in a water line, covering it back up. So I'd like a motion to approve this and second it.
Okay.
This is a, I, this is the water line that's going to the treatment plant.
Yes, sir, yep, yep, this is, as far as I understand, it's a formality to, um, be able to log Mr. Ferguson's licensing and stuff like that for the project due to a citizen concern?
I believe last time Leo Van Zambick was at the meeting and asked why a digging and grading permit had not been, um, pulled yet, or? And I see no reason why we just can't do one and give him what he wants.
But, but just real quick, generally speaking though, we don't need to normally do that, or do we?
We have not normally done that in the past, it's in a right-of-way.
Okay.
And domain as well.
Okay.
But we'll have it, it'll be Chuck's liability insurance is hooked on here, and we can get it signed, and I can get Leo Van Zambick a copy of it, and hopefully that'll make him happy and he'll be fine with that, and we can move, move forward.
Paid to pay, even though what we had done for the town, I paid to pay, so somewhere along the way, I'll get it back.
Right, wow. All right, um, anyone wanna make a motion to approve or deny or whatever?
I'll make that one too.
Okay, Aaron makes a motion to approve?
Can I second?
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Chuck did the work.
Yep, Donna seconds. I think in, in this case, uh, since it's for the town.
Not a conflict of interest.
It's not a conflict, yeah.
I second it.
Great, Donna seconds. Um, I, I don't know that we need to have any more discussion on this one.
No, listen.
So, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right, motion carries. Great, well, thank you very much Jill, and enjoy your Michelob's. All right, claims, on to claims.
Oh, God, two hours.
I'm sorry, Donna. Taking off, Anthony?
Yeah, I have a couple, some kids at home.
Yes, sir, I appreciate you sticking around and, and helping us out, so.
Yeah, um, that, um, work study just is on the twenty-sixth, is it?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight? Yeah, and what was that, is?
Six, so we have a set of them.
Okay.
What time are we doing it at? Can't we do it earlier?
Um, we'll tentatively do it at six, um, and then if, I get, let's just, let's just keep it at six, Dan. So that's what I've been telling everybody.
Okay.
So, all right, thanks, all right, sorry about that. So back to claims, um, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the claims. Are there any seconds?
I'll second it till we can move on.
Donna seconds, okay, any discussion on the claims? Okay, all those in favor of accepting the claims?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are you accepting or abstaining or, uh, Linda?
Aye.
Okay.
You just didn't hear me the first time, sorry.
No, motion carries. All right, on to, uh, the complaint. So this was the complaint covered in the work session, last work session we had. And just for people that weren't there, um, it was in reference to, uh, behavior from Mr. Styles at the meeting on December seventeenth, I believe was what it was. And, um, in my opinion, uh, behavior, you know, during the meeting was highly questionable and then after the meeting was egregious. And so, um, I made the comment during the work session that should Mr. Styles attend, uh, another meeting and I was presiding over it or I was in attendance, I would either as the chair request that he leave or, um, recommend to the chair that, that they recommend that he leave. So, um, what I'd like to do now is, um, see if the board would agree to follow up with that. And, um, I'd like to make a motion that we, um, we, um, how do you say it? Revoke Mr. Styles', um, privileges for coming to the meeting, um, for a indefinite amount of time until, um, further notice.
You're prohibiting, um, admittance into the meeting.
Yes, sir, yeah. Prohibiting admittance and, um, that goes for all meetings. So, um, regular meetings and work sessions and in which this board is presiding over. And, um, you know, it pains me to have to do this, but, um, I feel that it's necessary and then we'll find out if the board does as well. So, um, I think we had, uh, enough discussion about it at the last work session. I know Erin wasn't there. So if you had a comment or a question on this, I would love to hear it at this point. Um, and if not, then we can move on to the vote.
Yeah, I think I'm, I'm pretty, pretty rooted. Uh, I could never, never really be good with this, but it's, we'll all vote how we feel comfortable voting, but.
We can't take any comments. It's been discussed.
Yes, ma'am. Yep, we're gonna, we're gonna, uh, we covered this at the work session, so, um, I think we.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am?
I need one thing. I think you need to add all special meetings to that also. You had said all regular board meetings and work sessions. There are special meetings that we have, I don't know, four times a year, and I think that those should be added also.
Okay, yes, ma'am. So I'd like to update that motion with the special meetings added. So there's a motion on the floor. Does anyone want to second it?
I'll second it.
Okay, Linda seconds. Okay, um, I will add too that this is in, uh, compliance with Robert's Rules of Order, so, um. Anyways, so I guess, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? More of opposition, motion carries? Okay. All right, thank you very much. Um, legal, there's nothing on there, but Kent, do you have a comment or anything like that?
Yeah, yeah. I think on that last motion that was passed, we, we want to make it clear that we, the, the, the town board understands clearly that it's a citizen's right to attend these meetings. Not a privilege, but a right. And therefore a privilege can't be revoked for whatever, you know, I mean, excuse me, rights can't be revoked without some pretty significant cause. And so it's been the repeated experience of, uh, members, uh, both in the audience and on the board, who have experienced, uh, what would we consider as, certainly not civil behavior, threatening behavior. So much so that it'd be considered threatening a, a city official, which is against the law. So this seems to be the best remedy from having it get out of hand, uh, to the point where, um, it could become a criminal offense for Mr. Styles.
All right, thank you very much. Um, so moving on, public works. I guess that's you, Chuck.
Okay, um, starting out with streets, of course. Uh, they're pretty badly frozen at this point, but there is been some progress on patching and whatever that Dan's been doing. So that's about all I can say about the streets. Um, we did, the last little farm we had, there was a lot of ice. We did, uh, I bought a sand screeder and, uh, we sanded all the intersections so that, uh, you know, public safety. Stop signs and whatever, that was all sanded. And it could probably stand some more. I mean, if we get it, there's, there's a lot of ice out there yet places. But, uh, expense wise, I guess that'd be a board decision on whether you want something more or less done. Somebody should drive around and, and, uh, inspect them and see if they're okay or not. Or we certainly can supply some more sand to some of these areas that, uh, the standard round the school and stuff, uh, you know, high traffic area. So that's all I can say about streets. Street lights, um, we have three of the proverbial ones fixed. There is one Lone Ranger that's a dead end street that was caught two or three times. And, uh, the problem that you run into, the power that runs to these lights is secondary, so they will not locate them. But, um, conflict is, you know, a secondary goes in at eighteen inches to two foot. Primaries go in at four foot. The, uh, three phase that, uh, we took to the lagoon, uh, we put that in five foot. And no particular reason other than sanded it. It is powerful brown, but the chances are very, very slim that they're going to be going more than a couple feet, even that. Everybody's gone to an hotel and, uh, but REA, you know, is a little hectic about it. You know, there were caution ribbons for the evidence up to, if somebody digs that deep, they're gonna need a permit. So that shouldn't run a red flag up. There is utilities there. We, um, let's take care of the street lights. Water, uh, we had one booster pump that went down yesterday and, uh, still that's been replaced. And, um, uh, you know, the back tees, of course, were taken in for the monthly records and, you know, uh, water usage is minimal at this point. Obviously we're using more than they did on an average, you know, this time of year. You know, two or three years ago, but we've had quite a little development in the meantime, so it's accounting for the increase. Sewer, that's, wow, that's a good one. Um, we've been pretty busy, uh, working on the treatment plant. The actual treatment system is in. Tomorrow we probably will start on the building. We've done the last phase of the three-phase two hundred amp, uh, service that goes to that building. We're putting the wire in tomorrow and, uh, the water is already in. So we'll start construction on the building. There's about three feet of fill. Got to go in there on that whole thing. And there was quite a little confusion on the depth and floodplain and all of that stuff was not really brought out in the initial part of it. So you've been overlooked at it, one thing or another, and I told Ant when it, it blows my mind that there's going to be three feet of fill under that concrete. So we backed off on four footings, one thing or another. I was a little uncomfortable about four footings on three foot fill. So we went back to the original design, which is the pole barn, but took all of that out of, of the plant. So now we're back to the pole barn building and, uh, we'll start that tomorrow. Once we get, uh, we've got some plumbing to do and, uh, one thing or another, but I would assume that, you know, we can have that building up in a couple of weeks. Once that's up then, uh, and we're hopeful, so consequently, we're probably gonna have to reboard pond B or B. I noticed today that the pond doctor had quit. It, uh, heist up. But there is, uh, if you read the, the structure of the actual pond doctor, they have a built-in resistance. If something goes wrong, they'll shut themselves out. I don't know if that's what happened, but, you know, when you get twenty below, lots of things happen. And, uh, we've had the fourteen, fifteen below series right here, so probably tomorrow we'll, uh, address that and see why it's not running. The other one is. Total different configuration. But, uh, we'll see if, break for the trip or what's happened, you know, I'm quite certain. But it's one of those deals that, uh, you use a boat on ice. So the safety factor of it to work on that, I'll use a boat, uh, skip across the ice to look, let it go and see what's wrong. Uh, if you don't know to walk on that ice because you don't know how thick it is and just not drown the boat.
That was the ice on the pond?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I tried walking there.
So, you know, that's, uh, the long and the short of this sewer thing, you know, we, we had, uh, two freeze ups, uh, in the last couple of days because of the extreme cold. Those have since been repaired and, uh, back in order.
All right.
There you go.
All right, thanks Chuck. So on to work, open work orders. Um, we did discuss the sewer leak issue with Jones at the last work session. And, um, were you, Joan, were you, um, satisfied with the outcome of that?
Absolutely.
Okay. And, um, so I think that I, so just so everyone's aware, I did ask Anthony to get, um, bids to get that fixed. And, uh, so we'll, we'll see what they are and then of course Chuck can put his bid in and we'll get, get timelines along with the bids and everything like that. And then we'll, we'll get it fixed for you, so, uh, Dan, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I was just gonna make a comment on, uh, sanding, uh, that normally we had DOT do it before and they would come in and usually at no cost with their trucks and do whatever we needed, whatever we called them.
Okay.
And so that might be something to keep in your back of mind and normally with a sand pile like that anyway, it should be covered with a tarp, uh, the amount of chunks and what you're getting as far as the application and, and the application that was put down should be a little heavier if you're gonna apply it because it really didn't break real hard on it. And then when they piled the snow, we had a couple of people over here on Second Street now that we have the new bar open over there. They've got the piles where they're right out in the right of way and I knocked them down because one of the trucks went over it tonight. It wasn't a good circumstance with a horse trailer and so I flattened it out, but as it sat and no melting, there's gotten to be a problem where the chunk of ice.
Right.
Is what they are, so it may be where if you put them on people's lawns or properties, they're going to be upset and that's a hard situation for them in the snow. I know in the past I hauled them off, got rid of them. If we get to that circumstance where we have problems with that and then the right of ways and not enough room or runoff and melt off or creates ice across the intersection, sidewalks, maybe a little bit more involvement there, so.
Okay, um, yeah, let's, let's discuss that offline and see, um, like what, what we need to do. I'll talk to, I'll talk to you and Chuck and we'll see, uh, what's the best path forward on that. Make sure that we get everything taken care of.
And you must be getting more gravel out of that pile, Chuck, then? You know, it looked like somebody had been in it.
And I see that. I saw it with you.
I don't know who got in there because it wasn't me. Usually if I do, I would see what's with the trucks.
Oh, I'll take that back. We did, uh, like we did get one scoop out to take to the lagoon, but it's still city stuff. City owns the gravel and lagoon is the city's, so it's, it's kind of a wash. I brought gravel off of Third Street and took it to the lagoon also because, um, we had access, uh, at North Third where the proposed well is going to be drilled. So I hauled some of that to the lagoon. It's all owned by the city, so no harm, no foul, no.
All right. Um, yes, sir. Um, do anyone on the board have any comments or questions about any of the other open work orders? Okay, are you looking, Erin?
No.
Okay. All right, let's move on to streets. I guess that's you, Dan.
Yep, and other than, of course, with the freeze up there isn't much because you've done, there's quite a bit of, uh,
Right.
potholes popping up at, uh, the truck stop. I'll continue to try to get into them, pretty much anything you put down right now, it gets right back out because there is nothing there to attach itself to, so.
Right.
If they get too severe or too bad, I'll go film.
All right, sir.
And keep it on the liability thing where we don't have a problem, so. I'll keep pushing the dumpsters down as they, I've been doing that, keeping them in good shape on that aspect of it, so we'll keep that through too.
All righty, thank you very much, sir. Appreciate all your work on that. Appreciate your work on everything too, Chuck.
Thank you.
Yep. Do you have a comment?
No.
Oh, I thought you were raising your hand. All right, very good. Uh, finance office?
Okay, um, monthly financials are in your packets. Those are at the end of the year. I really haven't had a chance to review them much.
Okay.
Don't have any department updates. And we moved C to the work session. Um, D, so the CD renewal is part of that five hundred thousand that we moved from, when we moved up from Pioneer Bank. Linda and I put it in two CDs in Bank West, so this is the first one. So we did a six month CD, so it's coming, it matures the end of January, so. And I believe we were thinking of the time that we would need that money. That's why we kind of split it into like a six month and a nine month. So I guess I just need the board, do you want this then to go into the general, I mean, into our bank account or? We have to decide or do we renew it again? I'm not sure.
Have we, uh, uh, has the project moved as fast as we thought it would so that we need that money or do we have another six months?
Isn't this for the water stuff?
For the well?
For the well, yeah, and we haven't closed on, you know, I don't know.
Yeah.
I, I would recommend that, I believe it was Anthony that kind of had a timeframe.
Yep. Yep.
I would suggest that you check with Anthony on if we have enough time to put it into another one. If it's possible, we might as well make money.
Yep.
Yep.
If not, I suggest that we put it in the
Put it in the checking account?
Just regular checking account, whatever, yep.
Okay.
Okay, very good, thanks Terry.
Motion, I need a second on that now.
We need a motion on that.
She made a motion to have me check with Anthony?
No, I make a motion that Terry goes ahead and checks with Anthony and that is what we're going to do.
Okay.
And we go by Anthony's judgment.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. And the letter, so that one's done then?
Do we need to vote on that?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. You're right, the motion on the floor, I'm sorry.
You're fine.
So I think we had enough discussion on that, so all those in favor of Terry checking with Anthony to see if we're okay to renew that CD?
Aye.
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 All right, motion carries. Very good, all right.
So then we have the, so I got the draft of the audit that we did, we had Ben Elliott do for 22 and 23. The letter of comments is in your packet. I don't think there's anything too outstanding, so we'll wait, we'll get the final that has to go to LR, um legislative audits to be approved. And then once we get that, we'll get the final audit. And then I suppose I'll need to get on his list to start thinking about getting 24 audited, so.
I'd be on those lists, actually.
No, not really. I don't know if anybody.
I would like to comment on that too.
Yeah, please, please Linda.
I think that he likes doing it every two years.
Okay.
However, I would suggest that with all the projects that we have going on, that we, every year for a couple, two or three years here.
Yeah, I was going to check with him just to see how long it would, because he was supposed to do this one like last summer and then it ended up, it was about six months later. But he got it done, so. So if I check with him now, maybe we can get it done this year yet, I don't know, see how busy he is.
Okay.
All right.
All right, thank you Terry. Okay, old business?
Mr. President?
Oh, yes, sir.
Just one comment on the audit. He has that statement of effect in there when there is a matter that's voted on at a meeting and there are both yes and no votes. The minutes should indicate who voted yes and who voted no, and the municipal league, they took that away where you do not list names of who says yes or no, so that you can keep anonymous in that aspect of it, so. He should be corrected on that aspect and we will not obfuscate. And it keeps the anonymity of whoever's making the motions anonymous as well as the votes anonymous. And that's a, a big conflict situation, that's why the municipal league voted the way they voted.
Okay.
I'll ask him to correct that.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Well, that'll follow, that's the problem with the audits, they will follow, everything in here follows through from year to year to year. So anything that you catch in here that's even marginal or a little bit questionable, you want to get it removed as soon as you can.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I understand. I think that's a prudent thing to do.
Yep.
Okay, moving along, old business, update to FEMA and BRIC DTA grant.
Is that Joan?
Yeah, I don't have anything in the packet, but I believe that's you Joan.
Yes, be short.
Okay.
Just letting you know, we have a meeting January 21st. I, Gerald, Cal, and Linda, along with Katie Brown, Bridget Mitchell, Larry Johnson, Anthony, we're all there attending. First thing we discussed was the BRIC grant that we wrote for the flood mitigation. We had one request for information that we have already taken care of and sent back. And Katie said it was very good to get only one, so we were lucky there. So she was told probably within the next two to three weeks, we'll get the MOA to sign and then we can get started. That will probably come from Blair, it has to go to the state and then back to us. We discussed grant reporting, Blair says she'll notify the town when that becomes necessary and do, and it isn't necessary until you actually get into the grant and spend money. We updated our meeting schedule, it'll be bi-weekly now, starting with January 28th. We prioritized our goals as being the project for generators. So right now we're doing practice scoping and discussion on writing a grant for generators. Future meetings, we'll discuss other needs, but the deadline is February 14th, so it's important to just stick with that for the next couple of meetings. But I will let you know how that goes, thank you.
Awesome, thanks Joan.
You're doing sweet.
Yep. Okay, 12B, the HAGD Hermosa area growth and development funding request. That's you Dan?
Yeah, that's me.
Awesome.
I got a letter from there. Members of the Hermosa Town Board, on behalf of Hermosa Area Growth and Development Corporation, we extend our gratitude to you for allowing us the opportunity to present our proposal on two separate occasions, referencing the childcare study funding collaboration with Business Child Care. Your time and attention are greatly appreciated. After careful consideration, we have decided to respectfully withdraw our request as previously admitted. Moving forward, we intend to proceed independently with proprietary study to further explore and develop the opportunities we have outlined for our community. At a future date, if the findings of the study are deemed valuable, the town, access to the information may be granted following review and approval by the Hermosa Area Growth and Development Board of Directors. Additionally, any associated costs of the study will be addressed and reimbursement from the town may be addressed at that time. Moreover, there is more changes in support in the future from the Town Board. We'll be open to collaborate, data we invested in. This collaboration will occur should we have exhibit a strong action vote and consent from the board.
Awesome.
Give you guys a copy of this so you can't say we didn't get it.
I appreciate that.
Thanks Dan.
Thanks Dan. All right, very nice. Moving on.
Bye Dan.
Bye Dan.
Bye Dan.
All right, moving on. So it says motion to implement the sewer surcharge. However, it was already decided via, I believe, the resolution.
But we wanted a motion to say we are going to now do it because it never got implemented.
Right.
It was approved, but never, it's never been put on the bills, so.
I would make a motion to implement the motion that was made a year and a half ago about.
It was actually a resolution, right, part of this resolution in the packet?
Yep. That 1280 surcharge on the sewer.
So Linda, your motion is to go ahead with the implementation of the sewer surcharge?
As soon as it has been, the information has been given to the public on one bill, then the next bill, we implement it.
Okay.
And I believe the next bill is going out tomorrow and it will have that on it.
Yes, and I believe, because I had understood we were going to start in February.
Right.
So, yep, it's going to be on the back of the bills that go out tomorrow, notifying people that. And I'm sure Joan was going to put it on the
Yeah, just send whatever you want in there, I'd be happy to do because people that have signed up to pay electronically probably won't see that.
Yeah, yeah, just try to get out there, and probably put it on the website too.
Yep.
Try to get it out there as much as we can, let people know.
We have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
On the seconds, okay. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. So I don't see anything on here for the rate increase, what we need to do, so we'll have to
I thought we were just doing this one and then next year we're going to do
We need, we need to do this one and the rate increase this year?
And that's
And then next year is going to be the additional surcharge for the water treatment?
I thought, I thought they had said just to do the 1280 this year and then in 2026.
Yeah, for surcharges, yeah, but we also need to do the 10% rate increase too on
So does that have to be a resolution or how does, how does, how do we do that?
Well, I don't know, let's, let's take that to the next work session and answer that question. And then we can follow up on that at the following meeting. But it was recommended via the Waterworth model that we implement that as soon as possible. And it works out, I think, to about, it's between, between three and $4 a year. Okay.
Three and $4 a year?
A month.
A month.
A month, yeah. Okay, so we, motion passed to implement the sewer surcharge and then we're going to put the
Put that on the work session.
Put the 10% rate increase on the work session. Okay, very good, next one's resolution 2502, resolution authorizing both board president and board vice president to sign our grant paperwork. And this was a request from the, what are they, the Black Hills?
Black Hills Local Council of Government.
So it is an or, or?
Somebody either could sign, either, either could sign, president and or.
The wording is very important, isn't it?
Yeah, we have a copy of it right here, yeah, it's in front of you. So, so we need to read this out loud, right? Is this one that we have to read and then we
Yes, and it has to be published in its entirety, either in the minutes or separately.
Right, okay, so I guess, so we read it first and then vote on it, right?
Yeah, it only has to be one reading.
Right. Okay, so I'll go ahead and read it, resolution 02-2025, resolution to amend the designated authorized representative to certify and sign payment requests. Whereas the town of Hermosa, the town has determined it is necessary to proceed with improvements to its municipal wastewater treatment collection system. And whereas the town has secured financial assistance for the project through the South Dakota Board of Water and Natural Resources Board. So the board in this case is the South Dakota Board of Water and Natural Resources. And whereas the town previously approved resolution number 11-2021 dated December 21st, 2021, where the Town Board President was designated as the authorized representative to sign the application and certify and sign payment requests in. Whereas the town has determined it is necessary to amend the previous designation of authorized signatory to better accommodate the timeline for turnaround on pay requests when the board president is not available for signature. Now therefore be resolved by the town as follows. The Town Board President is hereby designated as an authorized representative of the town to certify and sign payment requests for financial assistance awarded for the project. And the Town Board Vice President is hereby designated as an authorized representative of the town to certify and sign payment requests in the event the Town Board President is not available for signature. So I'll entertain a motion to accept.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Linda makes the motion, second.
I'll second.
Here in the seconds. Okay, any discussion?
No.
Yes, I have.
Linda?
Yeah, Kent, I mean, I just, I guess I assumed it was always okay for this to happen. I mean, it is on the checking account. I, I understand they're asking for it and we do need to give them what's asked for, but, but I guess I'm just curious, is it really necessary?
Well, and so with another agency like that, who's looking for verification to fill that, so, the short answer, yes.
Okay, thank you.
There's reasons for them asking for it.
Okay, thanks.
I could say much more of it.
If it was seven o'clock, I'd say go for it.
All right, thank you very much Kent. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Any opposed? That was everybody anyways, right? Okay, motion carries. Next item is combined 2025 election agreement between Custer School District and Town of Hermosa, which is the back page of the packet.
And I actually gave you, did I give you an updated one? Yeah, revised one, yeah. So, they did, so there's a portion of Pennington, or Custer School District that actually overlaps into Pennington County. And it's just adjacent to the lineup there, so it's my understanding that they get to come here and it doesn't encompass a lot of people, but so I just want to make sure I had that correct in the and, and basically what we're doing is we're just combining the polling place. So the school board is going to have their ballot and then the town will have a different ballot with a different color and they're going to be put in different boxes and we'll canvas our votes and the school will canvas theirs. So we're just sharing a polling place to cut costs.
And this is in June, correct?
Yes, for the June 3rd is the election.
Okay.
Yep.
Are we making a motion?
We need a motion to approve the agreement because then, once I get, we approve it, then it goes to the school and they have to approve it. And then once they sign off, I'll, they'll send me a copy back, so.
I make the motion to approve?
Okay.
I'll second it.
Down to seconds. Okay, any discussion on this agreement? Any questions? Nope. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Okay, now we're on to items from citizens. I mean, I think pretty much everybody in here is aware of how it goes in here and that we can't take any action tonight on any issue being raised. So we'll just leave it at that and do we have any items from citizens, Joan?
I just wanted to mention that although Shannon didn't attend the meeting, she has tried, she tried several times to call. Her phone keeps dropping, so she texted me, I called her back several times and Verizon is evidently having some problems because it continually dropped my call.
Wow.
So I would really like to see you put the Zoom on the agenda. There would have been no problem with, I mean, even if you only want it for board members, that's fine, but you know, her and Linda could have both attended that way had they wanted to.
Right.
Especially when you have cell phone service, I mean, there was, I don't know what the problems might, but something was crazy.
Yeah. So we'll have to look into that, let's put that on the next meeting.
I think it's only $20 a month, which is nothing compared to what most of your utilities and phone services cost.
Yes ma'am. Yep, and, yeah, and I think at first we can do board members only until we work out the kinks and then also figure out ways to make sure that whatever's going up on the screen is what, what we want on the screen and that we can't have anybody interrupt to view that, that medium, so. Anyways, just like to make those comments, do we have Trina or Dan?
Yeah, I just, historically, we, we've had problems.
Yeah, I just, historically, we've, we've had a problem sending out letters. So that's the only comment I wanted to make about banning somebody from these meetings is that, hopefully you guys have already discussed it, and you're planning on having the board send a letter of what you've decided today, maybe from the board and/or the lawyer, so that it's in writing and we're not just relying on hearsay or this recording on YouTube to get back to the person.
Okay, thank you for that comment. Uh, Dan?
Um, I guess after going through this audit, I don't know if the board, and I just, I guess their questions to me, has done any of the, you have the personal property inventory that they need to do, if we've gotten that yet?
No, and that's, that was one thing I know was always a big issue in the county, too. And I don't think we were, so hopefully we'll get that implemented, but it's, it's gonna be a matter of inventorying everything. I mean, it's basically all your furniture and all that, but, um, but once we do it, it's pretty easy to keep it up. And we're gonna have to start at ground zero, so, but I do plan to get that done this year.
Then there was a lot in here about the TIP as far as the payments we made.
Yep.
And did that all get answered to him then, that he realized you paid that off and where the money's gotten to you back?
Yes, and then, I mean, he even indicated that maybe we needed some of that money back from the county. But I'm like, we're not gonna, I think we just need to, we've dissolved it. I mean, we've paid the county what was remaining in that fund. And I think I've determined that, that stuff that was in the liability belongs to the town, because after looking at, um, all the annual reports, it showed, I looked at all the expenses and revenue for the TIP funds, and it showed what we had reported, you know, reported that we spent, and our expenses were in excess of what we thought they were. So that liability amount definitely belongs to the town. So, and I'm still waiting on G-Works to help me get that account zeroed out, but, yeah, so.
And I see they had in here the board packet that would consider, uh, that each board packet gets a bank statement and a cash reconciliation. I'm assuming the board members are getting that.
Yep.
And then the utility going, that we're going ourselves for the sewer water.
Yeah, and I think that was in there last year, too, and I don't know that we ever, I don't think we did it either. I think I remember reading it in the last audit.
So I think there were all things that if we bring all of them into compliances and send answers back, that way he won't have them in a consideration of our report. Other than that, I thank you everybody for a good meeting, and appreciate your decisions, and respect where we're at. Hope we can move forward in a straight line.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Uh, Deb?
Just something short. When does the volunteer of the year have to be here again?
Uh, what is it?
February fourteenth, right, Joan?
Fourteenth?
The fourteenth, right?
Yes.
February fourteenth, yeah.
Okay. Any others? Chuck, would you like to make a comment as a citizen?
Yes, I would. I still am in that category. It's kinda like the reservation. They want to be sovereign nations when they want, but it, they still depend on government money. However, uh, I completely skipped the fact that we discussed with Anthony. And I don't know if you've had any contact with him on the status of the purchase of the vector. They need to close that deal immediately. Money's available, ship it over by Robert's car or whatever. That has, that needs to be handled immediately. Has he said anything to you?
No, 'cause last I heard, they were trying to decide where the money was gonna come from.
But we need to close that deal.
But it needs to be put on an agenda and the board vote that.
I think they voted last time.
No, they have not.
They have not.
They have not voted. No motion is made. We talked about it and discussed about where the money would come from and how much, you know, they're looking for X amount, and we talked about maybe offering a little bit lower, but no. They wanted twenty-five thousand, wasn't it? Isn't that what they had in it?
No. That was, uh.
You won't get one of those right.
That was twenty-four.
Okay, well, I don't know. I thought it was twenty-five thousand. But in, in any case, they talked about maybe offering them less and seeing if they'd take it. But that's as far as it went.
I indicated it was our best offer. They indicated when we were there that it wasn't going anywhere, and, you know, they wouldn't sell it out of Mongris and all that business. We're buying it as is. We know there is one major problem with it. And, uh, I think Anthony had figured that in, uh, when he took the money out of that certain area to cover that. But, uh, if we gotta get it fixed, we need to get it here first and get it in the shop so we can determine what's wrong, and we just, we need to move forward on it.
Is it the clutch?
The truck, yes.
The clutch is the issue?
It's a back truck, uh, that Hill City owns.
No, the, the issue, is it the clutch Anthony had mentioned?
Yes, to my knowledge, it is the clutch. I haven't had a chance to physically look at it. Uh, outfit in, in Sioux Falls has the parts, and they have worked on the truck before.
On that truck?
Yes.
Okay.
So I don't think what's wrong with it's any secret. The clutch is, is out, that it starts the turbo back part.
Yeah.
It still works, but it, there's problems actually. Or if we're not going into it blind, we know that they are, like, very reasonable price on the truck for, there's one holdout, uh, the new finance officer for Hill City. They're, they're trying to get out of it, what they think they got in it. Truck originally belonged to Hill City. And then it went to Custer, and then Custer to Hill City, and the idea was they were gonna will it to us. And then, uh, the guy, the new finance guy says, well, we'd like to at least get out of it, what we got in it. Reimbursement. They went to a trailer lot, because it's, uh, too big for getting into tight places. Consequently, you know, they're willing to get us. And, uh, I looked at the truck and, uh, actually, Cal, I believe, was there, and Linda was there. They all looked at it, and it's.
We actually didn't get to look, look at the truck.
It's a hell of a body.
I wish we had. We didn't.
Even if we're gonna pay it twenty-four. And Anthony circled some pot of gold over there where he was gonna take it out of the purchase. And it's done, because if there's a serious need to be done, that's gonna be a holdup. It will be very bad asset to our landlord.
All right.
We're doing our own getting and cleaning, and, uh, still looking. He thought there was money somewhere for, uh, covering. But we're paying thirty thousand a year, or it pays.
Yeah.
So, you know.
Can we, can we put that on the agenda for the work session?
Was it on the work session?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know. If you can make that motion tonight, you do have a quorum, but it wasn't on.
Was it on the agenda?
Right.
Yeah, well, what we'll do, we'll put on the work session for, uh, eight-minute maximum discussion.
Eight-minute what?
Maximum discussion, and, uh.
But you still can't make a motion.
No.
No, but we can, we can, uh, figure out what we'd like to do, and then do that at the next meeting. Yes, sir. Yeah, I appreciate you bringing that to our attention, Chuck. That's something that we need to jump on. All righty, is that all your input?
Yes.
All right, perfect. Any, any other citizen input? I think we covered everybody. Okay, very good. Trustee input. Donna?
Too long of a meeting.
All righty. Linda?
Uh, thank you. Good meeting, and it was long, but, uh, it was good also. So thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, Aaron?
Long meeting. A lot of, uh.
Too much conversation.
About the past.
Yeah, about the past.
I think the more we move away from that, the better off everybody's gonna be.
Very good.
Leave the password long.
Little less talk, a lot more action.
There you go. As Elvis says, right? All righty, well, I'll, uh.
I make motion we adjourn, adjourn this meeting.
All righty.
I sent you back.
Okay, look, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.